Today we are live for the second edition of the Lagos Talks Town Hall Meeting, live in Agboi Ketu Local Government. The theme is bridging the gap between the governed and the government.
Town meetings are very essential. It's all about deliberation, asking questions and knowing things that are not usually written out there.
This is our second one and it's a special one because it falls on Lagos Talks six, but this is a special one. It's always good to have this platform where people who are being governed can listen to those who are governing them and where they can exchange ideas and reactions.
It's a nexus between the government and the people so that we can get to the desired states.
I consider the talk show as a better move towards enlightening our people and letting them know those salient things that are in politics that they really need to know.
You're welcome to this edition of the Lagos Talks Town Hall Meeting. And this is for the Agboi Ketu Local Council Development Area and the environs. And it's such an opportunity for us to have a platform where the citizens, the government and people who are stakeholders can have conversations that move us forward. This is brought to you by Lagos Talks and partnership with the LCD-A. My name is Adu Ayene and I'm going to be your host, like I mentioned earlier, alongside a couple of my colleagues that will be handling several sessions that will be coming to you today. Because this room is fairly large and I cannot go around to greet everybody, please indulge and help me look to the person on your left or right as the case may be and help me welcome them to this town hall meeting. Whilst you're doing that, give them compliments on my behalf. Tell them how good their hair is, how beautiful their makeup is, how nice their abada looks. You know, "I like the color of your shoe, will you give it to me?" You know, in case your neighbor is not talking to you, you have my permission to change your seat though. And you must make sure they give you five compliments about you, so you must be counting. Alright, thank you very much. A big round of applause for yourself. Now, I just need to mention as well that this particular town hall meeting is being broadcast on our radio station Lagos Talks 91.3 FM. So if you have people who are not here, maybe because of work constraints or some other engagements, they can listen live on radio on Lagos Talks 91.3 FM. So everything we discuss here, every conversation, every question is not just ending in this room. The whole world is listening to us. I think we needed to give a round of applause for that. Alright, so to give us an insight as to why we're here today, Lagos Talks has a hierarchy of leadership, starting from Managing Director of Megallectrics and the CEO himself, whom we'll bring up later. However, the team of Lagos Talks has someone who is spearheading it. And I'm going to bring her momentarily to tell us the reason why we're here, why we had to have this setup and have the leaders in the community be here this Thursday morning. And in a moment, I would like to bring to the microphone the Programs Director for the station. The Programs Director for the station, that's Lagos Talks 91.3 FM, who is the one who leads the team, where a lot of presenters like myself, and she's at the helm, leading the team, to give us an insight as to why we are here today. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my distinguished pleasure to introduce to some and present to others, Ms. Ife Igue. A round of applause, please.
A very good morning, ladies and gentlemen. To the distinguished Chairman Agboi Ketu, Mayor Dele Oshinawa, my Managing Director for Megallectrics Limited, Mr. Chris Ubozi, the Obas that are here, the speakers and all the attendees, thank you so much for making it a point to join us today at our Town Hall Meeting, Agboi Ketu Edition. My name, as he introduced, is Ife Igue. I'm the Programs Director for Lagos Talks 91.3. A few months ago, we made it a note to ensure that we are stepping in as a media organization to, as usual, contribute to nation building. Now, we do understand that there are several stakeholders in nation building. We of course have the populace, we have the media, we have the government, and we all have to work hand in hand to ensure that the better Nigeria, the future Nigeria that we also desire is a reality. The overarching theme for the Lagos Talks Town Hall Meetings is bridging the gap between the government and the governed. We want to make it a point that the citizens, the electorates, have the opportunity to liaise or to dialogue with their leaders. You know, the leaders are here to serve us all. And so we thought to make it a point, this is the second edition and we're hoping that it's going to be much bigger and much better. We're going to have a series of panel sessions. We would have our keynote speaker who is going to be presenting a few words to us. And you also get to contribute and ask questions because that's the whole point. So it's not about the leaders coming to talk to you, as always. It's going to be a conversational event today. So once again, I welcome you all and have an enjoyable moment today at our Town Hall Meeting.
Thank you very much for that wonderful introduction. Please, I think she deserves another round of applause. So that is my delectable ogar at the top. We have a lot of distinguished ladies and gentlemen here in this auditorium today. And for malty and necessity, betokens that we acknowledge their presence appropriately. Of course, we'll start from the man at the helm of the Agboi Ketu LCD-A and none other than the Executive Chairman himself, Mayor Dele Oshinawa. Please, a round of applause for him. Thank you very much, sir. We're pleasure to have you. We have our royal fathers because we are of African heritage and we respect the role of monarchy and leadership. And of course, it's our distinguished pleasure to have here with us His Royal Majesty, Obadoktor Isiyaka Oyero Adetutu Balogun, Obadoktor of Ketu Koshofel Land, Ilufemi Loyé I. Kabiesi, you're welcome, sir. And we also have here Alayeluwa, Obadoktor Engineer Oladega Akimasha I, the fourth Olu of Agboi Land as well. Kabiesi, you're welcome. One of our keynote speakers who will be delving into the conversation we're having today is none other than the Honorable Commissioner of Wealth Creation and Employment, Honorable Mrs. Yetunde Arubike. She's also here this morning. You're welcome, ma. We have members of the All Progressive Congress who are here, but predominantly represented by the Treasurer for Lagos State, in person of Honorable Abiodun Ahigwe is also here this morning. Thank you very much. We also have students who left their holiday to be here today, from the Comprehensive High School, the Junior and the Senior Secondary School, right? Can you wave your hands where you are? Please, a round of applause for them. They came with their teachers and the Nigerian Union of Teachers also escorted them there here. They are also right there behind. Please, a round of applause for them. Alright, so like I mentioned, Lagos Talks has different hierarchies of leadership. And apart from the Programs Director who spoke with us moments ago, the entire company is under a brand name Megallectrics. And we're privileged to have a very amazing leader and the CEO and founder of the company and is here with us today. In a brief remark, he's going to tell us the vision of the station, the vision of this town hall and how Megallectrics has taken giant strides to change Lagos one LCD-A or LGA at a time. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my distinguished pleasure to welcome Mr. Chris Ubozi, the MD/CEO, Megallectrics. Please, a round of applause for him, so that they'll give me bonus at the end of the month.
I saw them, they give bonus. Good morning. Please permit me to stand on the existing protocol. I want to start by thanking everybody for taking time out to come here. I mean, it's a Thursday, it's a busy day and I'm really glad to have you all here. Lagos Talks started six years ago. We had other brands in our stable which included Beat FM, Nijah FM, Classic FM. But it took a certain amount of... We had built our credibility and we had built a level of trust with our listenership. And so we could now delve into what I consider the most difficult aspect of radio, which is talk radio. That's when we started Lagos Talks. Because it's a platform to speak the voice, to speak for the voiceless. It's a platform to... It's a channel to express the desires, the things that people cannot say themselves. We were the voice for the voiceless, so to speak. You know how it is, it's always... You hardly find somebody calling to say he has had 24 hours' light. He calls in to say he hasn't had light. So it's always bad news. It's always, you know, so what we do is try and create a place where we can hear from the people and have those responsible respond, give them also an avenue to respond. And that's what we've successfully done over the last six years. A couple of months ago, we started the first Lagos Talks Town Hall Meeting. The first one was in our host community, the Obalindie LCD-A, where we had our Executive Chairman and we had the Honorable Member representing Etele Satu. It was the first one, it was hugely successful. And so we took a poll of where... Online poll of where to start, where to do the second one. And I'd like to, at this point, thank our host, our Executive Chairman, Honorable Mayor Oshinawa for his help. He's been amazing. Graciously gave us this hall to use and graciously provided everything you see on the way in here. He's been wonderful and this is actually a more special one. It's the second, but it's more special because it is indeed our sixth anniversary. Lagos Talks is actually six and we're being hosted. So your colleague was jealous that we are doing it here instead of in our house in Obalindie, but we, you know, we're Lagosians and this is also our home. So thank you very much. I want to thank the Honorable Member representing Koshofetu, Honorable Femi Said. Thank you very much, sir. I want to thank our other speakers, Alaja Cafira Togba. I want to thank Shino Lorremiko. And also, of course, Amomi, Honorable Mrs. Yetunde Arubike. Thank you very much. We have had interactions upstairs and from what I see, what I've heard and in listening to them, I think we're in for a very good time. In for, you know, the theme of the whole thing is the governed and the listening. A platform for the governed to speak to the... For the governors to speak to the ungoverned. You know, you know what I mean? So given what I've interacted with them, I think there's going to be a lot of interactions. I urge us to be polite and to be constructive in our criticisms, whatever we do. And again, thank you very much for coming and let's all have a good time today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Please, a round of applause one more time for Mr. Chris Ubozi. Thank you for that welcome address. Whilst we were speaking, the Member, Honorable Member representing Koshofetu for the Lagos State House of Assembly, Honorable Femi Said is also with us. Please, let's give him a round of applause. You're welcome, sir. He is one of our panelists today and he'll be speaking amongst many others in the course of the program. We have different civil society groups and organizations that are also in our midst today and a couple of them would be giving us a goodwill message just to let us know how they also are contributing to this larger conversation. Now, remember that I said whatever we say here is being broadcast to the world. People are watching us on Facebook, people are watching us on YouTube. So it's not just within here that this conversation is ending. It's going to far-reaching places. And remember, the questions you ask here is not to attack the people who are at the helm of affairs, is to find out, give suggestions and make concise contributions. So please, don't see this as an opportunity to throw arrows figuratively at those who are at the helm of affairs. So we have two people from the civil society groups. Comrade Alex Omotehinche, that's the President for Centre for Human and Socioeconomic Rights, CHSR, as well as Mr. Shino Lorremiko from Laksop. Laksop. Mr. Shino is here this morning as well. Please, a big round of applause for him. Okay, so having introduced them, I'd like to bring for a short goodwill message from the Lagos State Civil Society Partnership. I'm guessing that Mr. Comrade Alex Omotehinche is the one who would speak on their behalf. Please, a round of applause to... Yes, please come, sir, just to give a goodwill message from the civil society groups who are also in partnership with us, contributing and working with us to nation building and the development of Lagos.
Good morning, everybody. Permit me to stand on the existing protocol. On behalf of the Lagos Civil Society Partnership, I want to welcome you all. I belong to this constituency. I'm glad this event is coming up here, hosted by a sitting chairman, a working chairman, Honorable Mayor Dele Oshinawa. And I have my honorable here, who is representing the Koshofel constituency too, also a promise keeper, Honorable Femi Said. You're welcome. Our royal fathers, you are all welcome. It's a very good development that we're having a radio station bringing out events like this. And it's going to be an opportunity for people to discuss with their representatives. Those of you who have seen the good being done by the chairman, please, it's good for you to say it out here. And if there is any error, say it out. As a civil society organization and human rights activist, we're trained to condemn and commend. If you have done anything good, we commend you. That does not mean if you air tomorrow, we'll not oppose you. The good people of Agboi Ketu, the good people of Koshofel, I welcome you all to this hall. Our message is that a big thanks to Lagos Talks for bringing down this event. And we pray that a similar event will come up next at Ikosi Shari because under Koshofel, we have two LCDAs, Agboi Ketu and Ikosi Shari, so that the grassroots will fuel the government and we have opportunity to hear their views. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your goodwill message. And he mentioned our royal fathers who are here with us this morning and honor betokens that we have them speak to us and we have their royal blessing. And after that, we're going to... Because the LCD-A, under the leadership of Honorable Mayor Dele Oshinawa, has achieved some strides in the course of his administration. So we will be bringing those things to you. So before you start to say, "My local government or LCD-A hasn't done anything", at least you can see some of the things that have been done. And then when you are asking your questions, you know where and how to direct them. But before that, please, it's my singular honor and distinguished pleasure to bring for amongst the two royal fathers for the first goodwill message, His Royal Majesty, Obadoktor Isiyaka Oyero Adetutu Balogun, who is the Obadoktor of Ketu Koshofel Land, Ilufemi Loyé I. Kabiesi, please, we'd just like to have you speak to us.
Thank you so much. I welcome everybody to this occasion. My honorable, the Chairman, Agboi Ketu LCD-A, Honorable Oladega Oshinawa. Thank you so much. My honorable Commissioner, Otumba Mrs. Arubike Yetunde. You're welcome to. Our representative in the Lagos State House of Assembly, Honorable Femi Said. I'm sorry, that thing is about missing. You're welcome also. This is a town hall meeting for which everybody has the right, has an opportunity to say one or two things as is a face individual. As for me, my Chairman has been wonderfully performing in this place. Not to say that sometimes we may not have some issues to disagree and agree with at a long run, but I'm sure if it has to be rated, it will have scored above 90%. Thank you so much. I really appreciate my Alayeluwa, the Olo of Agboi, Kabiesi, Monsuru, Oladega, for having that time to attend this kind of meeting. Thank you so much. I have to say thank you to everybody and put a comma to we have reached so far. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Please, a round of applause. Lagos Talks. Thank you very much. A round of applause for Kabiesi. We also have another royal father with us today, in person of Alayeluwa, Obadoktor Engineer Oladega Akimasha I. He's the fourth Olu of Agboi Land. He also just gave us a short remark and then after that, please pay attention to the multimedia screens.
Good morning to you all. Please permit me to stand on the established protocol. Mayor Dele Oshinawa, Chairman of Agboi Ketu Local Government, Honorable Mrs. Yetunde Arubike, Honorable Femi Said and all other executive member here present, you are all welcome to this Lagos Talk Town Hall Meeting, 91.3 FM today. It is a great honor to be here today and one of the good things in community is to have interaction between the people and the government and people who are governing. And this is the first step, I think, our headbeach chairman has done today and we commend you for this. As we all know, you're the best health. It is good that Mayor Dele Oshinawa that is doing, that bring this one to here today. And I want to tell you, out of the whole Lagos State Chairman, I think he's one of the best Chairman we have. And that is why during the second term election, there was nobody to contest with him. That is a sign of a good work and hard work of a leadership. Mayor Dele Oshinawa, I commend you today and I pray you should be doing more of this and God will be with you to the end of your time. As the custodian of a tradition and culture, it would be advisable for me to speak in the language that I was being governed on. Moki boko eze wa nibileni ti wasi town hall meeting tashendi ti LCD-A wa Agboi LCD-A tumu organize. Taba wewe maripe ruu komba i o dalakupo intori ipe opolo kwanu niya fani. Latibacha manso olati mite jube kagoma jua sumuwa nu moto lo. Afani leli majefuni lati bili ntabafe bili nibileni. Wa kwa intawa lata boini muti moti wa, moka ena kwa tama bili nbi ke bili nibileni. So uwa fani ba iloda lati organize. Intori ipe oma mutesuwa juba iluni. Konija ipe agoma gopeli, agoma kompe nile. De mka tava komplevu anya fani latiri le ya fina fani lati she. So moki owe ipe ekabo echeo. God bless you all.
As heard by our Managing Director that it is our sixth year anniversary, so we are celebrating six years of thought-provoking conversations, transformative conversations, nation-building conversations. So I will be starting off with the very first show that you hear in the morning. If you tune into Lagos Talks 91.3, weekdays, that is Monday to Friday, from 6:00 AM. The name of that particular show is called the Early Edition, which is hosted by our compared today, Adu Ayene. A round of applause, please. Following that, because that runs from 6:00 AM all the way down to 11:00 AM, so from 11:00 AM all the way down to 4:00 PM, it is called the Midday Show, which is hosted by myself, Ifnanya Igue. And right after that is the Live Drive and that is hosted by Michelle Agbo. That comes up from 4:00 PM all the way down to 9:00 PM. Would you come up to the stage, please? And then right after that is the Late Edition and that is hosted by Kofi Bartels. And we have the After Dark with Kolawale, but he's currently in the studio and I'm sure he could hear us. So Kolawale, yes, you're supposed to be here. So Kolawale, yes, you're supposed to be here. And I would also be inviting the host of the Weekend Show, he goes by the name Kaio De Ipusu. And the cherry on top, because you know, when we talk about Lagos Talks, we, we say that it is a talk radio station, but with a prime focus towards politics and sports. Now we have the extraordinary Joseph Faulkner, who is the head of the sports team on Lagos Talks ninety-one point three. So this is the dream team, I should say, and they have definitely been working hard to ensure that the content that you're listening to is nothing short of, like I mentioned, transformative, life-changing, conversational, nation-building, entertaining, and the list goes on and on. A round of applause for them as well. And it doesn't stop here, you know, they may not be able to come on the stage, but it takes a village, right? It's not just the honourable personalities here that make Lagos Talks what it is. We have several departments. I would definitely love to appreciate the editorial department, one that we just added to our team and they have been absolutely amazing. From Joye Gouda, who is the community manager, she's over there working. We have Obina Obiru, who is right there at the back as well. Trust Shoni Nonsay, he's not here, he's in the studio, trying to ensure that everything is on track, as well as Paula Chine, who is in the studio. Round of applause once again. All right, our compare extraordinary, take it away.
Thank you very much. A big round of applause for my beautiful and handsome colleagues. And the honourable. All right, I hope you are having a great time with us this morning on the conversations we are going on with. Now, we are getting closer and closer to the crux of the matter, because I know the reason why a lot of us are here is so that we can have that one-on-one opportunity with those who are the helm of affairs. The truth is, it takes cooperation between the governed, governed and the government for any society to work. So inasmuch as I know a lot of us would have things to say regarding what has been done, what has not been done, remember that your cooperation, my cooperation is most important. Now, without further ado, to coordinate the panelist session that will be having our panelists and keynote speakers speak is my colleague. He is the radio host for the weekend shows on Lagos Talks. He's also on the leadership team of Lagos Talks ninety-one point three FM. He's, was introduced earlier and we've nicknamed him Honourable. I'm talking about none other than Oloa Kaio De Ipusu. And he's joining me today on the stage. Good morning, Kaio De, how are you today?
Good morning, Adu. I'm doing great and I hope you're doing well.
Oh, yes, I'm doing well. Is your microphone on now?
It is, it is, yeah. It is on. So.
Okay.
All right, and good morning, everybody. I hope we are having a good time here. If we're excited to be here, can we just put our hands together for ourselves, please? And irrespective of whatever we do, the team has been introduced. You've seen some of the faces to the voices you hear on daily basis, summer weekends, and you've heard of the team that is working behind. But for a station to be successful, for a station and the team to be making impact, you need great management. Unfortunately, a lot of our management staff are not around to contribute to what we are doing right here today, but they've been the ones backing us, giving us the support that we need, making it possible for us to arrive here. So I'd like us all in the hall to join us, the production team, to appreciate the management of Lagos Talks, represented here by MD, Mr. Chris Obosi. Let's put our hands together for him, please. All right, so we're going into the crux of the matter while we're here today. We're here to have a conversation and Lagos Talks is not just about having talks.
Right.
You know, I, you know, it's one thing to talk, it's another thing to communicate. You can actually speak for a whole day and nobody has anything to take home, but you can speak for just one minute and it's a punchline. And so at Lagos Talks, we understand this fact and we try to choose our words well. We try to make impact, which is one of the reasons we are doing these town hall meetings, making it possible for people to speak right. Like we saw in the video, you realize that a lot of people at times, we ask local governments questions we should be asking state governments. We ask state governments questions we should be asking federal governments. We are asking for power, you are asking for certain things that are not within the purview of the local government. And then you get angry at the local government chairman or his team for not providing what they are not empowered by law to provide. We no get light, this chairman is useless. I don't know how useful he can be with that. So part of what we do, the reason we do this program is to educate people, to let them know that, okay, this is the responsibility of this person, this is who to go to. And more importantly, if you're having challenges, it's not just about accusing, it's about approaching, communicating and interacting with the people. Because we know that when you talk of politicians, a lot of Nigerians see them as not them. So it's them against us. But we're trying to bridge that gap, to say, you know what, these are your politicians, they are accessible, they've come to you, what do you have to say? Just ask questions, make suggestions, because politicians are open to suggestions. I did say that during the last meeting we had.
Yeah.
Somebody actually got, comments were taken and somebody got a job.
Somebody got a job on the spot.
Yes, somebody got a job. And I've decided that today, should the chairman decide to give a job out, Mr. Obosi said, you might lose a staff, because I might just go with him.
You want to go.
You, you, you'll join me too, right? Because I've heard, the way people have praised the chairman today, I, I mean, maybe I'll just go with him and see if I would just join the team, commuting all the way from the island to here daily. So, well, and let, before we continue with the panel session, I think it's important that we also appreciate the Agboi Ketu LCDAs.
Absolutely.
For opening up their doors. It's not, okay, this might not sound politically right, but I'll need to say it. A lot of local council development areas or LGs that you approach that, let's come to your place for a town hall meeting, they won't allow you, because they know they don't have anything to show. They'll just avoid you and toss you around. Okay, I thought you were clapping.
But not so here. A round of applause.
All right. They would just tell you, oh, no, no, we're not, we're not interested. We, they wouldn't tell you, we do our own town hall. And I say, let's see picture, I say, don't worry, we do our own town hall. But for him to open up his doors means that he knows they're working for the people, they are making impact and they are ready. They are ready to listen to critics and get feedback and be able to speak. Being a young man, we're saying we want the younger, it doesn't fall within the category of youth, I doubt, although in Nigeria, we often call forty-five-year-old people youth. I don't know how.
Interesting, I must say.
You know, but when we say we want younger minds, I believe that this is part of things. Okay, let's hear the people, let's speak to them, let them speak to us and let's move on. Adu?
Thank you very much, Kaio De. So I know that we're about to bring the panelists upstage to have the conversation, but I know there are a couple of things that need to be shown on the multimedia screen to herald that. So that will happen and then the panelists will be prepared for their session and they will all come up and then we can have the interaction. Kaio De will be the one to ask the questions and of course will give you an opportunity as well to ask the question. If you are online, you can send your questions to the chat options on both Facebook and of course on YouTube. So please pay attention to the screens, we'll be right back.
All right, and well. All right, so, well, you know, I spoke about earlier on about communicating and speaking rights and I'm gonna give you a scenario that happened. A four-year-old child, not, I, I hope everybody understands this, a four-year-old child goes home and goes to the parents to say, mommy, you know, the mom and dad were there, it's a young couple in their thirties, and shouts, mommy, mommy, I need a doggy, I need a doggy. And mommy and daddy got angry, shut up, where did you learn that? And they chase the child away. So the child walks away sad, wondering, what have I said, just walks away. Then later in the evening, they were watching a cartoon and there's this character, a dog that is called Doggy. And the child now said, mommy, I want a doggy. But before they could shout at the child again, they realized what the child was pointing at. So then they felt bad, so why were we, why were we shouting at this guy all along? I mean, so what I'm saying here is that at times, Mr. A might speak and mean X, but Mr. B hears it and feels Y. Because we are influenced by our expo, we're exposed to, the experience we've had and all the things that we do, and those are the things we want to kill here today. So when we are speaking, let's make sure that we open up our minds, we, we are ready to receive, we are ready to appreciate what the speakers will tell us today. Remember, one of the ladies in the video said, they are doing it, but people don't believe. That doesn't mean they are not doing it, they're doing it, but you don't believe. So you need to first of all believe and take in whatever has been said and for us to be able to make good use of our meeting today. For us, this is not just a talk shop, it's a place where we get a lot of impact. And to address that, the theme for today's program is politics as a catalyst for change. Because a lot of people see politicians as, no mind them. But we'd like to point out the things that politics brings to the table for the nation, for the individual, for the community, for everybody. And to do that, there is no other person than an experienced politician who is a mother figure to the local council area and Lagos at large and influential in Nigerian politics, somebody who understands the actual acronym of politics. Politics is not just P O L I T I C S, there's an acronym, Marabish will tell us that later on, but there is no other person than Honourable Mrs. Yetunde Arobeke. I hope I got the pronunciation right. Please join me, ma'am, to do your, to give your keynote address today on politics as a catalyst to change. If you're clapping for her, please do that till she gets to the stage. Let's keep clapping, let's appreciate her.
Thank you very much. Please, oh, thank you. You're seated already, I wanted to say, can we be seated? Thank you very, very much. I say good morning to everybody. And I'm happy to be in your midst. The Executive Chairman Agboi Ketu LCDAs. My darling son, political son, Mayor Dele Oshinawo. I think it deserves a round and round of applause. Thank you, thank you very much. The State Treasurer, one of our leaders in this great LCDAs, Honourable Abiyodun Aibe. The Obah of Agboi, Obah Monsuru Oladega. Kavyesi O, Alaketu. Very proud to call him, I made him an oba, Abi Baba. Kavyesi sa. I was the chairman of Agboi Ketu when he was coronated. Obah Ishaka Ujero. Okay. The Chairman of Agboi Ketu CDC, Shivaro Ajayi. All the lawmakers of Agboi Ketu, our wonderful councillors, I'm sure they are seated somewhere, where they, you're well-recognized. All our candidates from the House of Rep, Mrs. Cafilat Obara, to our second timer, my darling brother, Dilaha. Mr. Honourable Fermi Said. The organizers of this great, fantastic event, I say fantastic because, you know, it's a golden opportunity when the governed liaise with the people that govern them and they're able to ask questions, things that they do not know, exactly like someone saying, the chairman of the local government is in charge of PHCN, when the state is not even in charge of PHCN. It's the federal government and it's in the exclusive list. So in a forum like this, we get to have added knowledge to the things we know and the things we ought to know. Thank you very much, the convener of this wonderful Lagos Talk Town Hall Meeting. Thank you very, we didn't have this opportunity when we were chairman and a lot of people who kept on putting the cart before the horse, talking about the things the federal government should do and asking the governor to do it, and the things that the state should do, wondering why is local government not doing it? It doesn't have the financial capacity to do it. Thank you very much. So Managing Director of Mega, Megaletics of Lagos State Talk Show ninety-one point three, then the Secretary to the Local Government, he is seated, my dear brother, I recognize you. All the panelists, Comrade Shino. Oh, sorry, I'm very sorry, Comrade Alex Omoteisha. No, sorry if I pronounce it wrongly, this is the way I see it written here. Sorry, I'm very sorry. Do I have La Costa Chairman here, La Costa Chairman of Agboi Ketu? Uh-uh. Uh-uh, no, this is really a town hall meeting. Then Mrs., uh-uh. Anyway, I wanted to call Mrs. Adegba, I don't know how the way it's written here, it's so funny. Then student of the Comprehensive Junior High School, I greet you this morning, good morning, all of you. Good morning, you are here to actually learn and I will appreciate if you listen very well. It is my pleasure to be here among my people to speak to the current topic, politics as a catalyst for change. This could not have come at a better time given the currency of the topic to the extent political reality in Nigeria. Our great country is about to enter into another political transition with implication for electioneering and ultimately a change in the government and public politics, policies. The relevant, the relevance of this imminent democratic process and its capabilities to activate a change that will affect directly. that will affect directly the voyage of a ship of state, the collective destinies of the citizen, and generally our society cannot be underemphasized. It is in this context that I would define politics, both literally and sincerely as a stimulus for change. The Oxford Line Dictionary defines politics as the activities involved in getting and using power in public life and being able to influence decisions that affect a country or a society. On this part, on its part, Collins Dictionary describes politics as the action or activity concerned with achieving and using power in a country or a society. And Wikipedia presenters yet another exposition define politics as a set of activities that are associated with making decisions in groups or other forms of power relation among individuals, such as distribution of resources or status. Still, on definition, American political theorist Harold Lasswell views politics as a way of determining who gets what, when, and how. To him, it is also about the distribution of value pattern in society through the instrumentality of political power that has potentials to affect others. Don't worry, my mothers, o imbotos, so to to, to kawi. Ashekini. When the time comes. Based on the foregoing, we can carefully distill the operational phraseology of politics as a political power, decision-making, and policies. And what this implies is that the feedback from our political system are the aggregate of inputs fed into it in terms of actions or inactions of political actors and the various interests, including the citizen. The question then is, how can politics catalyze a change in society? Firstly, from the institutional point of view, the government can influence positive change in society since government operates within the institutional framework upon which society is ordered and is being administered. When it is understood that it is policies and actions are a veritable goal on our national and individual well-being. The reality of this is that a political policy will affect citizens and society positively, while a failed one will do otherwise. Prior to the 1997 Asian Financial Crisis, the quadruple of Hong Kong, Singapore, South Korea, and Taiwan assemly five miracle economic growth achieved through expansive industrialization that elevated them into high-income economies. We have similarly witnessed the economic transformation of the United Arab Emirates from being a landlocked territory to becoming the most valuable nation brand in the Middle East. Yet, the UAE is not slowing down as it continues to pursue vigorously its ambition to become the best country in the world based on its set tenure plan for its citizens. Lagos as a city-state mirrors the success of this great nation in terms of its metamorphosis economically and infrastructure-wise and based on projected growth indicators. I must say emphatically that the senior that binds all the examples cited is political will, vision, audacity of conviction. So politics therefore remains an enabler for change with a focus, focused leadership and effective policy processes and stability. It is undoubted that politics can catalyze change only in a stable political environment. Because security is an incentive for local and foreign investment and ultimately economic prosperity of both the country and our citizens. Be that as it may, a country is progressive only as far as its level of political development. So the level of citizen involvement in political affairs, activities, and runnings of government are keychain factors. It is therefore behoves on institutional and non-institutional actors to initiate and pursue peace, nation-building, political cohesion, while governments specifically stare the ship. It does so, not in isolation though of itself. It does so with the citizen because they all have shared destiny. Because it is the later involvement in democratic process that confers on the government the political authority and legitimacy it requires to lead. This linkage confirms the mutual inclusiveness of political players and the rest of the citizen in politics. It confirms the seeing that we are indeed the change we seek or make for our society. Critically, a responsible citizen contributes to our politics in first gen too. The power to vote during election time is a right and the privilege of citizenship to participate in government policies and holding office, public office, as the case may be. Therefore, I wish to submit on equal vocally that the change we desire is in our individual and collective will, which is what I will always converse for because I have the conviction that it is only the way to success. Ladies and gentlemen, I wish to conclude by urging a political awakening that will indeed set us on the path to making politics a real change factor in the society. I thank you all for listening. God bless you all. To kawi, ashekini. What did you do? Think about two months, it's just like a wasted effort, isn't it? Yeah. Our definition, Latin dictionary to American political leaders. Election is round the corner. Abibeko, we are to decide who rules us. Tabawa Joko, tabawa Kawakon. I won't judge the lord of the boy. Because there is nothing you can do without politics. Hey, I know, Osimbi. I do what you are. Osimbi. Delé Oshinowa. Otoche tele, tele, land up. So by Jala Gakansu, Tontilekwe. Tele, fairy tale. Abimo Paro. That is why I submit this morning. And it's not peculiar to Nigeria, neither is it peculiar to Abuiketu. I can remember when my governor, huh, when we had his primaries and they came from Abuja. And to hold delegates devoted, all we were hearing is. Econo wawabami moni. Eh? Magelie lenugeti. Oloka tika tia wawaw. Oh, my job, I don't contest against. I job at you, shitada. I job at obashida, that's all I do, Bafe. Think about big day against the home waste timer. Kini moso? Ah, Abijio. Think about any job, I told you, I just can't stop. But when you leave, if you start, I mean, you. I mean, go me not to me, go me no da da. Eh, you're coming by me only. Momma, I go me no. Eh, my name is a psycho fan, so I'm sure you need a yellow. Eh, more. I want to assume that I'm more. But so bad, babe, proposal. Tony, I got me. Ah, you know, see what you are, you two. You propose, I wafo. But I want to, while the job centers were. I create opportunities for one. I want to, why engaged? The more engaged the youths are, the less the crime rate. Think about me, but only that is shalaya. Mashalaya, mashalaya, mashalaya. He did, oh, she need that is shalaya, you wait, eh? Ah, hey. Bobo, it was she has sass, yeah? She, you're too one. I feel real money, go. Bobo, I'm not a man, but I tell you, you too long. Ah, whoa. God bless you, the initiator of that cloud because he really deserves a round of applause. My time is up. A while ago, oh, you made a wrong person your guest speaker because I can talk to you tomorrow. Thank you. God bless you all.
All right, thank you very much. Can we do that once again? Let's put our hands together for her. And I think, ma'am, with the ease with which you speak and the command you have of English, we will be happy to have you as a guest presenter on our station on the first of October, where we are celebrating Nigeria at this year's anniversary. So we'll have her. So tune into Lagos Talks Night 1.3 FM. We have that special appearances from time to time with the way she speaks and the control of English. We'll have her appear and spend one hour with us. So. Thank you very much. Can we put our hands together for Abiyesu as he leaves? All right, so it's time for us to get into the real talk. And the real talk here is the panel sessions where we bring our panelists up. They will engage us on the themes they are speaking on. And after that, we're able to ask questions, interact with them, ask for clarity, advise them on what to do, but most importantly, speak with a lot of respect, the same way you would like to be spoken to. We will be starting with the man who said, come to my area. I have so many things to do. I have so many things to show you. I've done a lot. And but he won't just be speaking to us. He will be showing us this through the video that will be coming on the screen right about now.
Mayor Dile Oshinowa was sworn in as the third democratically elected chairman of Abuiketu LCD. Allah Dile Oshinowa, hand over the flag to Abuiketu LCD. Under his leadership, Abuiketu is operating an inclusive policy for all without prejudice to tribe, religion, or political affiliations. He has successfully pleased the electorate as the driving seat of governors. In an unprecedented fashion, the chairman has institutionalized feedback mechanism for all voices to be heard. In the area of infrastructure, his administration has initiated and completed an ultra-modern two-story office complex within a remarkable period of his first three months in office.
This building has been constructed to provide conducive and enabling work environment for our public servants and the citizenry to interface and interact comfortably.
Also, in line with this drive to provide a conducive environment for government transaction, in that his administration constructed another gigantic and gorgeous two-story edifice with a structure while we all are sundry. This administrative building was commissioned by the Executive Governor of Lagos State, Mr. Baba Jede Sowolu.
This is what governance is all about. We're not made to.
All right, normally, we would say, thank you. Normally, when things like this happen, we have to spiritualize it. So let's just point at this screen and say the devil is a liar. That we need to complete this video. But while we wait to complete that video, I think it's only right that we don't spend more time waiting. The video will play on later on. But right now, let's invite the man we all call Mayor Dile Oshinowa as he gives us this presentation. Can we keep clapping, please?
Good morning. Good morning, Saz. Good morning, ma'am. As you know, my name is Mayor Dile Oshinowa and I'm here as your host. And quickly, let me stand on the existing protocol. And at the same time, I want to appreciate all the youth here present and the market women, the last quotas, civil society organizations here present. I'm here to talk about politics, getting started as a youth. It is very important, if you look at our history in Kushefe Asero, the youth has been in charge of the affairs of the local government and the LCDAs. And luckily for me, I was able to convince the first executive chairman of Abuiketu LCD to call me as a guest speaker. And thank you very much for coming, ma. And also, my honorable representative in Kushefe constituency two, Honorable Premier Sari. And my own sister, Alaja Cafilat Obara. Uh our candidate for Kushefe federal constituency. Thank you very much for coming. Our comrade. We have two comrades here eh, Shinawo. Wally me, I mean. Well, I'm comrade Alex. Yes, it is very important for us to know that. Town hall meeting is a way of, you know, getting back to your community. It's a feedback mechanism whereby everybody can easily interact. And this is part of what we have embedded in our administration. On at my first, at the first time, my first tenure. I was able to organize town hall meeting across all the world through the councilors, which is quarterly. And since then, they've been doing it, we've been getting feedback from. Uh from the from the residents of Agueke two LCD. But it's very important to know that most of us, most of the people, they choose to ignore. Um what we are doing in our in our community, especially when we ask for them to come for the community, you know. Um feedback. But some will come and they will tell us what they want. But let me use my as an example, let me go back to politics and getting started as a youth. I I joined politics early, at a very young age. And since then, I always call myself as a poster boy. When I joined, they asked me to go and paste poster and all that. And diligently, I have been doing that. And. Because of that, they know, they saw my capability in organizing things. And they made me organizing secretary for the then youth vanguard before it metamorphosed into UIC. I started doing all that. And thereafter, I traveled out of the uh the shore. I went to United Kingdom to further my education. Um I left Abaddon, the Polytechnic Abaddon, I went to University of East London for my uh degree and my MSC. So I major in risk management, uh business continuity, as a business continuity analyst. So since then, I came back because it's part of me and it's my passion to contribute to the development of my community. I remember I told late Honorable today, I said, sir, I'm coming to be the executive chairman of one of these. Uh whatever, then it was Kushefe, and I said, okay, go ahead and do it. Go ahead and do it. I said, I'll do it. And I believe in myself. I said, okay, let me travel abroad and do study and all that, I'll come back. But I decided to, and it is intentional, to keep in touch with all the leaders. You know, tell them what we need to do, you know, advise them, interact with them. So on my return to Nigeria, I said I want to contest. And I started. And I move around and then they said, yeah, you're a young man, it is not time for you, you know. But they saw the capability, they saw the competency. And we started from there. I contested in 2011. I contested in 2015 and when it gets to 2017. The leadership have actually, as of then, they've established uh the kind of person. The kind of person I am. So. They decided to support me, to give you that platform to be the executive chairman of Agueke two. And since then, we have been changing the face. Of politics in Agueke two and governance. Because the people, the youth, the elders are my inspiration. They advise me, I talk to them, I create social relationship with them. I move around my local government, I interact with the youth. But at this same time, some of them believe that, hey, you don't want to get to him. Ojeman Lee eh, he's not approachable. It's because most of them will just come to you and start asking something that is not pertaining to governance. Something that is not them. Some will come to you, they'll tell you eh eh, Oga, when are you coming to drink with us? I said, I will come, don't worry. But once in a while, I find a space out of my no time, I'll go and sit with them. It doesn't mean that I'll drink with them. I'll go, we'll talk, we relate, we interact. And at the end of the day, I'll let them understand that you need to be part of politics. It is not living, if you're saying that, yeah, politicians are no good. And you left us there. Who is going to make a change? Nobody is going to make. Nobody is going to caution us, nobody is going to challenge us. We need, you need to be part of the system, you need to, you know, give us. Uh you know, question us. Let us know what we are doing and what is, what we are doing that is good and what we are doing that is not good. Well, most of the time, you criticize politicians without telling us, without appreciating what we have done. Is our primary duty as a politician to make a change? And but. Don't, they don't appreciate that. They would tell us, if you fix a road, they'll say, yes, you have fixed it, it was our own business with that, go and fix another road, yes. If I have all the money, I'll fix all the road in Agueke two. We are trying our best, out of no money. Out of this positive fund, we are still making impact, which is very important. So the youth, it is very important for you, because I started at the early age. It is very important for you to be part of it. If you're saying PDP is no good, APC is no good, and you're moving away from there. So who is going to be the chain maker? So you need to be part of this system, you need to be part of it. But the changes that you need start. It uh start inside or when you join your party, your political party. APC, PDP, Labour Party, whatever party, you need to join them. You're saying that all the parties here are no good. Everybody only you are, yes, if you say we are only. But why can't you just come in and make that difference? Tell us that, come and tell us that you are no only, because. We refuse to understand what is going on in uh in our political system. The only thing you see is go online, go on social media, believe whatever people are putting out there. Even a picture will be doctored that, yes, somebody is saying so, 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 without you verifying. And you believe from from there, you start taking it to everybody, you start telling everybody, this is what we have, this is what politicians are doing. And most of the time, it is not like that. People deliberately, intentionally, who want to change the narrative, who want to confuse you. And at the end of the day, because you are not verifying, you are not looking for the facts, you are not fact checking it. That means you have, at the end of the day, you build it into your own brain and start telling people beside you, people in your community. So that's the reason why we are appreciating what Lagos Talks have done. You know, in partnering with us, when they said to that, when they, when they discussing with me, I said, come, this is what I want. I want it and we must go ahead and do this. And. We are here today for you to ask us questions. Ask us whatever is bothering your mind, whatever you want to know about this system. This local government, you want to know about this local government, you want to know about Lagos state as a whole. Let us, let me quickly say something to you. There's trunk A, there's trunk B, there's trunk C roads. Government level, we are actually in charge of trunk C. Why the states are actually in charge of trunk B? Why the federal government is in charge of trunk A? And anything lesser than one kilometer, the local government should not dabble into it. And most of the time, because of fund, we find it difficult to do a total reconstruction of road. What we are getting now, yes, the exchange rate is bad. The exchange rate is bad, but at the end of the day, what we are doing, we are thinking outside the box to provide solutions. On health issue in our local government. We've improved on our health sectors. And part of what we are doing is talking into the universal health coverage. Very soon, in the next two weeks, we'll be rolling out 2,500 health insurance to the people of Agueke two LCD. But I want to tell you something, when you put it out on the social media, I am telling you, my local government is one of the most active on social media. And when you go there, tell them that you need to register for this, come and subscribe to this, they will say. You can, to the lady, she said, we should come to them, but they see it. They won't register, when we ask them to come and register, you won't see them coming to register. Recently, we went out to do trader support scheme, supporting the market, the traders. Trade with 50,000 to help their market, because we went there to assess them. And on getting there, we saw, we asked one of them, what's the market value of what you're selling? They tell you. They tell. Yes, we do trip, I do. And we contribute, sometimes we save 5,000, we save 1,000. If you times that by 30 or 24, believing that they are not working Saturday or Sunday, you know how much that will be? And these people are managing that and using it to help their children, to send their children. Thank God for Lagos state government who is providing free education to and free YAC and NACO for the people of Lagos state. These people. If you have. Uh what you're selling, they say. Can testify to it, I can testify to you that a lot of them have given us feedback on this. And we have a lot of programs for our youth. We need empowerment program, it's one of the kind in Lagos state. We train people for minimum of six months, maximum of two years. And these people are benefiting from me. If you look at the multiplier effect, in terms of eradicating extreme poverty. There's difference between extreme poverty and aggregate poverty. So bringing people away from poverty, close to aggregate poverty, from aggregate poverty down to down the line. The multiplier effect, somebody you train as a tailor. That person will be able to provide food for his or a family. Somebody you train on graphic design will be able to provide food for their family. So look at that multiplier effect, you're bringing them out of poverty. This is what we are doing. And I want to say something to us, most of the youth, you, whenever we say something, try and believe whatever we are saying. Don't say, yeah, that it, let us ignore them. No, it is not going to work like that. Be part of it, be part of the system, be, you know, whatever you have any question for us, please send it to us. On our social media and I promise you, personally, people knows, I respond to questions on social media. I don't shy away from it, I shy away from criticism. So this is what I have for you and my name remains Mayor Deli Oshinawa. Thank you very much.
Alright, and let's put hands together for him one more time. Thank you for that, Mayor. One of the benefits is that he spoke, was trying to extend his time to that of Honorable Arabia Care. But unfortunately, I won't invite you to Lagos Talks on the first of October. Huh? I won't invite you to Lagos Talks on the first of October. Uh we cannot make first of October, Agueke two, October first. But anyway, so we'll call our next panelist who will give a short speech. But before then, I'd like to just appreciate uh some dignitaries that have come in. By the way, we are all very, very important persons and that's why we are here. So let's put hands together for ourselves first. For being that important. But amongst the important people, we have also chosen some leaders. So I'd like to start from the LCD. Uh the clerk of the house and the councilors, can we just take a bow? Let's appreciate them. The clerk of the house, the councilors, can we stand up? Let's see us, please. Alright. And I see that we also have Alaja Shakira Balogo, Yaloga General, Agueke two, is she around here, please? Yes, ma'am, let's put hands together for her as well. We have somebody from the Nigerian Union of Teachers, Ademola Shade. Ademola Shade, Nigerian Union of Teachers. Alright, we're somewhere. Now, we have a high chief, Ashiwaju Ogunake. I hope I got the last name right, it wasn't very clear. High Chief Ashiwaju, um somewhere around. And we have someone I'm going to introduce. Nowadays, it's difficult to just say you are from Kan, but I have somebody from Kan in the person of Ojo Ruth Adewale. Uh let's put hands together, please. Let's put hands together for her, please. She is from Kan, Agueke two. Alright, and thank you all for coming. And of course, one of our panelists who we couldn't introduce earlier on, also came in during the presentation. And her name is Alaja Cafilat Obara. She will be joining us on the stage. Let's put hands together. And even as we used the opportunity, ma'am, to invite you to come give your presentation and take your seats. Let's continue with a round of applause. That's quite a long walk. Let's make sure that she gets here before we stop speaking. Let's keep clapping till she gets here. Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everybody. Our protocol duly extended. But I'll just recognize a few of the protocols. The state treasurer of our party, Honorable Ayigbe. Honorable Premier Sari, the House of Assembly member. Mrs. Yetunde Arabia Care, our honorable commissioner. Mayor Deli Oshinawa, the chairman that is performing wonders in Agueke two. The MD Mega Electrics, Lagos Talks, 91.3 FM. Our royal fathers here present and that have left as well. CDC, CDA leaders here present, religious leaders, members of staff of 91.3 FM. All participants, students, the media, security agencies, and of course, you know. I've mentioned the media, everybody here present, everybody upstairs, all residents of Agueke two, you're all welcome. My topic this afternoon is to speak on. How to access economic opportunities in Nigeria. I would be speaking on how to do it. The topic actually is accessing economic opportunities in Nigeria. We can discuss this globally, speaking to Nigeria on how Nigeria should access our opportunities. But I have, you know, taken my time to speak on how we people can access opportunities in Nigeria. Because I think that is more beneficial to us here. So I started with the introduction, what are economic opportunities, importance of economic opportunities in Nigeria. Economic opportunities based on diverse factors in Nigeria's history, assessing the opportunities. We have identified Nigeria as the most populous country and arguably the largest economy on the continent. Nigeria is widely regarded as an African powerhouse with abundant natural resources and a young dynamic population. The country has long played an important role on the continent. And it has the potential to be a wider global player in the coming decades. In the bid to address this particular topic, there is need to address the idea of opportunities. From how one views problems or challenges. The right perspective to any challenge is an opportunity in disguise. Which invariably positions one's thoughts to be the solution. Here, I am starting by taking our minds. To ourselves, to think inward. If there's any challenge in your life as you sit here. You have to first of all, have a positive thought within you. Have that positive leadership within you, identify yourself as a leader. Most of the times, they call the young people of Nigeria as the future leaders. And I always, I I don't always agree with that, I always argue it. That there's no future anywhere, the future is now. You have to take charge, you have to take that and claim it. That there's no future anywhere, that the future is now. So if you have any challenge in your, in your life right now, look at yourself, think inward that how can I face this challenge? And the first thing is to have a positive mindset. So that is where I'm starting from. And what is economic opportunity? Economic opportunity is support from a society that gives an individual the chance to thrive in an economic system. This can be separated from the talent, motivation, and self-discipline of an individual. Whereby some people with many opportunities will fail to thrive. And others with little opportunity will overcome diversity to thrive nonetheless. So this means that if you as an individual, you are prepared and you have a positive mindset. Of course, you can achieve it faster than one who does not really, you know, have that kind of mindset. And the following are common examples of economic opportunities. Actually, I prepared for a wide presentation, but later I got to know that I was going to speak for 10 minutes. So I'm trying to pick and then just get my points across so that we can take something home. So the following are common examples of economic opportunities. Access to finance. Most of the time, most of us complain that we want to trade, we want to do a number of things, but we cannot access finance. But I want to believe that this is because most people are ignorant of where to go and how to go about it. There are a lot of opportunities, even in this country as we speak. We have the Bank of Industry that is helping a lot of entrepreneurs, a lot of business-minded oriented people that are ready to come up with, you know, ideas and things that can be beneficial to them and of course be beneficial to the country as well. But you have to come up with a unique selling point, you just have to be different. You have to have a fresh idea, something that is not the usual. So this is why as an individual, you have to be able to think outside the box. We also have Baba Tude Akim Lawal, who benefited, benefited from USAID. I think he got about four million dollars or thereabouts from USAID. The first benefit he got was about thirty million before. So there are a lot of people that benefit a lot of things if you do your research. And of course, we have, you are, as Nigerians, we have access to technology. There are different countries in this world, like China. There are some countries, even Dubai, they don't allow you to use WhatsApp. Some people, some countries restrict their, I mean, their populace from accessing technology to an extent. Nigeria, everybody is free. So you are in a free world, unlimited opportunity to technology. And today, we all know what technology does to us. For people who are, who are entrepreneurs, they can tell you that technology is the best thing that has happened to their lives. Even I as an individual, I can attest to that. So there is nothing you are doing, whatever it is, just try and ensure that you include technology to your business. Even as little as being a hairdresser or a fashion designer, try, go on Instagram, you know, Facebook, TikTok, whatever medium you want to use. Every medium to communicate to people, to communicate, communicate to your target audience. Most of the time, even if you want to do advert online, they will ask you the age range, the countries you are trying to target, all these things are available on social media. So we have unlimited opportunities to technology, we have access to it and we should harness it so that we can develop our business. Whatever you are doing, you just have to obscure it so that you can progress. So the opportunities are still bound in Nigeria and they will continue to be there. We have the opportunity of citizenship and residence status, we don't have issues about that. Economic freedom, economic stability. Our economy may not be so stable, but we believe that the leadership that we have presently, they have done their best. We are looking up as politicians, I am APC and the House of Web candidate for this coming election in Shala, come twenty twenty-three. And we are looking up to a president, Ashiwaju Bolaamet Sunumbu, who we believe that he is going to be a transformational change, is going to be a barrier breaker because we believe that Nigeria needs a leader that has the vision, that has the passion, that can give us that action that we need to change this country. And also employment, most of the time as young people, whatever employment you get. I told some of the people that I employed when I was in Audit Service Commission. Wherever you find yourself, make yourself valuable. Add value, let people know that you have something extra to offer and I can tell you, you are going to go places. I still have a lot, but there is no time. Thank you very much.
Let's put our hands together for her one more time. And I think that beyond politics, all speakers have something that we need outside politics. I never knew, ma'am, that you could draw bars when I heard you saying the vision, the passion and the action. I just felt like putting a bit to it and bringing an MI to feature on it and just release an album for probably next year's election. And when we're writing the script for that, maybe we'll come visit you, ma'am. Let's put our hands together for her one more time. All right, before we call the next panelists, I'd like to appreciate, recognize a few more people. We have Honorable Abiodun Akibe, he's a treasurer of Ayigbe, treasurer of the All Progressive Congress Lagos State. Let's appreciate him, please. We also have Honorable Olashupo Oluwu Edward. Olawewa, okay, I thought it was Oluwu, all right. Olawewa Edward is a former Lagos Assembly aspirant for Koshafair constituency two. And we have Mrs. Bingwe Esong, is the president of, I think the person that wrote this thing is a doctor. But Mrs. Bingwe Esong, please let's appreciate you wherever you are, please. Esong, okay, it's, it's the person who wrote it like a Kalaba name, Esong, like someone who's writing prescription. But let's move on swiftly from there and, but by the way. But from time to time, we mix the rubber and the English to make it easy for us, I mean, to interact. However. All right, so let's move on now and invite the next, I was going to say aspirants. The next panelist, he is a member of the House of Assembly, is an affable person, a brilliant banker, an expert in microfinance, and he is Honorable Femi Sahid. A round of applause for him. Okay.
Good morning, all. I want to greet the cabinet of Uluwakari Obaladega. You are highly welcome, sir. The executive chairman of Agboike to LCD A, Mayor Dele Oshinowo. The pioneer chairman of Agboike to LCD A, Honorable Yetunde Arubieke, the president commissioner for wealth creation Lagos State. I want to greet the, the state treasurer of our party, All Progressive Congress, Honorable Biodu Hayigbe. I want to stand, I want to greet the management staff, management and staff of Mega Electrics, that is ninety-one point three FM, for putting up this wonderful and all their constituents. Furthermore, I want to extend this to the Laskota, the Markets Association, the youth leaders present here today. The roles of politics in governments is the topic that I've been giving to you just to speak for ten minutes. And you see, governments, we need to divide what is poverty. Poverty is when an individual or an household or a nation cannot meet minimum standard of living. And when a nation or an household or an, cannot meet this minimum standard of living, we tend to have the situation that is called poverty. There are different types of poverty. We have abject poverty, we have absolute poverty, we have urban poverty, we have rural poverty. And there is no, by the time you constitute all, you aggregate all this together, it is still the same poverty. But now, we understand, we believe that there's poverty in Africa. We understand that with the recent Corona pandemic, that even nations that are doing so well all over the world have been plugged into poverty due to one thing or another. Nigeria is not going to stand alone. If you look at what happened in UK sometimes back, their prime minister was kicked. It was due to the way the recession was going. Even America last week was about to enter into recession. That is to tell you that all is not well all over the world. But we as Nigerians, why are we in the midst of plenty and we are sovereign according to what the Honorable Commissioner for Wealth Creation has said? Nigeria is a land of opportunity. Nigeria is a land that is bound with so many things. But why are we in this quagmire? That is the topic I'm here to speak today and beg you to highlight to you. Let's bring poverty, politics, the role of governments. That is the essence of this engagement so that we can understand what is my own responsibility, what is your role responsibility and what are the expectation my constituency are expecting from me? What are the expectation that I'm going to give to my constituency? Let's take it one by one. If you look at what, the way we divide poverty, then what is government? Government is a multifaceted process of aggregating the result, the political power, exercising political authority, bringing political administration, bringing political ingenuity in addressing some of these problems that we are facing in Nigeria today. Then if you look at from nineteen sixty, during the Guan regime, Abbasajian regime, there was Green Revolution, there was Operation Free the Nation, there was Better Life, there was NAPEP, there is a, a trader's money, so many poverty alleviation program. But why is it that most of these poverty alleviation program has not been able to impact positively on Nigeria? It is because, number one, we lack political will, we lack political administration, we lack the understanding and that is one way Nigeria is changing and is fast changing. We are gathered here to discuss the topic that is affecting us as individuals. It is when the governments understand most of the areas that have been, that we've highlighted, that even the citizens are now taking up challenges according to what the chairmans have just said. I started my political career as a youth with AD, from AD to AC, from AC to ACM, from ACN to All Progressive Conference, up to this level. I have learned a lot during my sojourn as a youth leader that we need brilliant professional tactician to manage the affairs of our country. And that is one fundamental things that my party has infused in me. Now, going by that again, I went to different schools, I attended different school, different course, different time. I worked and I rose to the chief operating officer of a mortgage bank and a microfinance bank. I have learned something, I have learned a lot. Those are the things that we should be bringing together as youth that want to effect change, that youth that want to bring Nigeria from the chaku of poverty, that, that youth that want to lead, lead that leadership role that is going to be unprecedented in the history of our nation. If you don't have what it takes to rule a country, you dare not go there as a politician. It is only when you have the understanding, the professional capability, the experience and the integrity, integrity and honesty and veritable experience. This is where I work, this is what I've done, this is what I've achieved, this is what I'm capable of doing that people can believe in you and you can excel the way the chairman has been appraised here today. And I think this should be the focal point of people that are advocating for change, people that are advocating for political leadership. Assess your candidates very well, the way the Honorable Commissioner has said. Does he or she ask what it takes to take you out from where we are to where we are supposed? I just want to size a serious example before I go and sit down. The, when the Honorable Commissioner Arubieke took over the mantle of leadership of Agboike to LCD A, it was just no secretariat, no rules, nothing. That is to tell you the kind of government that the All Progressive Congress is making. The Ashiwaju Bolaamet thought in his wisdom that Koshafair local government is too big. It was divided into three, Ekosi, Sherry LCD A, Agboike to LCD A. You can see the monumental edifice that the chairman commissioned as secretariat. As it be, we are still under Koshafair. All of us will be going from here to Koshafair to go and assess administrative, administrative functions. But the same way Mayor Agboi moved is the same way Ekosi Sherry moved and built another monumental edifice. That is the selling point we are telling Nigerians. That is what Ashiwaju want to go and replicate over there. That is why some of us, this, I'm telling you our blueprints, we want to replicate good work in order for us to eradicate poverty. I, there will be free access to healthcare, there will be, there will be housing policy, there will be food production, we are now going to move from consumption nation to productive nation. It is when we move from a, a consumption nation to productive nation that our teaming youth can be employed, that our, where our businesses will be thriving, that our bank will be making money, that our GDP will be growing. And we, as a government, that knows the way the truth pinches the people. Our government was the first government in Lagos State to inaugurate the first independent power project, which never saw the light of the day, which means we have already have a good track record of performance that will lead Nigeria out of chaku of poverty and joblessness. Thank you very much.
All right, sir, thank you very much for that, sir. And in order for me to get a bit of a promotion and recognition at the office, I need to say this, sir. All three of you, you know, we are radio station and we are not an NGO, we are a for-profit. This is one of our corporate social responsibilities that we are doing. But the amount of campaign that has gone on on this stage. Thank God, we have a rep of our marketing department here. And at radio stations, we bill per second, we do per second billing. So far, we've spoken about twenty minutes, so we'll send you the, like an hour, yeah, you see? Those are timekeepers and accurate co-debaters, they are all speaking, like an hour, so we'll send you the bill. Before you get out, we'll print it, don't worry, we are very digital and send you the bill. But then we let's appreciate panelists, let's put our hands together for them. All right, now we've had three members of the, you know, politicians or governments. It's time for us to go to the CSOs. Let's hear from the CSOs, what they have to say, how they understand what we are doing and what we are able to take out of this. But before I do that, there is a senior colleague whom some of you have asked for when we started the program that, okay, we've seen Adju, we've seen Ife, we've seen Michelle, we've seen Oluwakarede. Where is Adeni Kuno? Mr. Adeni Kuno, can you please stand up and take a bow? Let's appreciate him. That Mr. Adeni Kuno on on radio Thursdays and Fridays getting us, you know, the details and information we need about our great nation Nigeria. But right about now, let's take a walk down to those who hold the people accountable, hold government accountable and whose sole priority is to make sure that Nigeria works for everybody. They are hated by many, loved by many at the same time, but they never stop doing their job. Speaking for the CSOs today will be a member of the Lagos State Civil Society Partnership for Development. Yeah, Laxo, I always, I always mix that up. And in the person of Mr. Shino Lorremicon, let's put our hands together for him, please. Can we put our hands together, please? Let's, let's appreciate him. Of course, it's obvious he's not from Agboike to, but we can still appreciate him.
Thank you very much and good day to everyone. As mentioned, my name is Shino Lorremicon. I am here very happy, very delighted and no regrets. However, if my presentation is short of expectation. However, if my presentation is short of expectation, all blames goes to my mother. She died last year at the age of one hundred and nine. I call my father lazy man. He did not pay my school fees for one day. He died before I started primary school. I want to say thank you once again. And that is no big deal. I think the previous speakers have spoken well. I should just take a bow and go. But because I left home before six AM to be at this function, let me justify why I missed my breakfast from my beautiful wife by saying that there is nothing new under the sky. There are, this is our own generation. Sooner or later, we will pass away. I don't see anybody in this hall that will spend additional fifty-five years. If they have, if they have, they will see a lot of things. If they have, they will see a lot of things. And then they'll be comparing notes. Hold on, hold on. They'll be comparing notes as we are here now. If you had thought forty years ago that we'll be using this sort of answer, you'll say it is not possible. And as we are here now, some people are thinking of the future. I have seen it. I have seen a aircraft where it has double decker bed. The man who invented airline, aeroplane, never thought in his imagination that there can be a double decker bed in the aircraft. We have said all good things about governance. We have defined poverty excellently. I also want to say there is a missing link in our definition of poverty. Poverty of ideas. Many of my father generation, they built beautiful houses. Today, none of their children can live in those houses. I live in Bishokrada in Suruleri. My next door neighbors, we are former president of South Africa, Tamu Beki, the registrar of Yabatek, former commissioner for information Lagos state, federal accountant general of Nigeria, Alajim. May God grant, is peaceful, stay in heaven. When I was growing up in Suruleri, waste disposal board, Akole, they come into our streets. We don't pay a cobble. They ring bell to evacuate our waste when I was living in Suruleri. When I was in Ikoi, where I started my primary school at Falomo St. George's Primary School. We had a passage to cross the road. It's an underground tunnel. Today it has been shut down. I imagine if you have a parent and hate parents living somewhere at Suruleri by Barracks Bus Stop, Fadai or Onipan. If they want to go round town with their condition, their state of health, I don't know how they'll climb that bridge. I have seen it in other countries. They have lifts that takes the aged or the weak across. This is two thousand and twenty-two. By next year, we'll be having election. I traveled a lot. I started this NGO work before I married. That was nineteen eighty-nine. I was a foundation member of the Committee for the Defense of Human Rights. Dr. Beko was our pioneer president. I know what Lagos is by my palm. And I'm saying with all due respect, we have a Jackonde who took over power three years after Muirit Allah Ahmed was assassinated at Ikoi. Almost opposite federal secretariat. Three years after Jackonde came on board. Jackonde was not only, was not only living in his illiquid residence. He was using his Toyota Crown that had no bulletproof. Today, people in public office ride Jeeps with bulletproof. Today, some of my friends in government, immediately they secure, immediately they are sworn in, they relocate. They don't stay in the neighborhood again after election. In this Lagos, some of my friends who are in government, my business is not to mention them. In the same Lagos, Jackonde was thinking of a metro line. Our dynamic, hardworking, transparent and intelligent integrity president stopped him in nineteen eighty-four. We are back to it now. We are running behind schedule to have our light bring. In Egypt, Cairo, they have a train there as far back as nineteen eighty-nine. I'm happy to tell you, women, you are winning. Are you a beauty? Or were you? In Cairo, they have the first Obiorni to be driving the train. I don't know what will happen to us. Today, we pay to dispose waste in Lagos. Some people, some absence have been threatened. We'll close it down. I came here with my bag. I'm not Babala job. If they can give me my bag. I came with some of the books that I should have used to buy iPhone. This book, in this book, you find the nineteen sixty-three constitution there. The nineteen seventy-nine constitution is inside. The nineteen ninety-nine constitution is inside. In this book, we violated all the principles of federalism worldwide. With all due respect, with all due respect, I'm saying this. We are, we that are federalists, we are jack the power of local governments and gave it to state government as if local government, Nkololo Lewa, Koselen States, Ishia Akole, Togja Shere Local Government, Atiba. Outside, big board, outdoor advertising, Togja Shere Local Government, Towa Nukonstitution. Our federalist, Abamo Olowo. Odubelow. Oh, Yaki Local Government, Mashen Drainage, Owoli Shere Drainage. Atuni Drain Dock. There is a, 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 a structure in Lagos state that they call Drain Dock. My parents pay tenement rates. I am, I am a friend of the government, a friend of the government. Even if we have the Congress of the party and Alajio Ogbara won the primaries. Between the venue of the Congress and Abuja, we are transmitting the result. Anything can change. We are saying no. Two thousand and twenty-three, Kuboro ribe. Finally, finally. The business of governance is guaranteed in the constitution of Nigeria. There is a document they call United Nations Declaration of Human Rights. You have the right to participate in the government of your country. There is a document they call African Charter on Women and People's Rights.
All right. Okay, okay, all right. I know, I know we all, I know we all enjoyed the, the presentation of our speakers. All right, can, can we have one house? Can we have one house, please? Can we have one house? I know we all, we all enjoy the presentations of our panelists. But he made some statements at the end of his presentation, which reminded me of a song. And if you are a Yoruba man, I'm sure you should understand this song. While he was saying this, some people were chanting the song. All right, let's put our hands together for them, please. All right, so with that, we're about to start the panel session. We have Mayor Shinawa, Alajio Ogbara, Honorable Sahid and Mr. Lorremicon. And my name is Oluwakayade. Let's put hands together for them, please, as we get started. All right, well, where do we start from? I think the first question here is based on the presentation you did, Mr. Lorremicon. I think we will start with you to look at the challenges you raised, the limitation of the local government, the confusing state of our politics, the abuse of the constitution and how are we going to resolve this? But before you answer that, I'd like to remind everybody that we're here this afternoon or this morning, still some minutes before twelve, I believe. And one of the major things we are doing is to look for solutions. We are not here to antagonize. We're not here to settle scores, saying, I greeted chairman that day. You know, answer me. Maybe you didn't hear. You want to come here and talk at him. I've been looking for a way to see Honorable Sahid. If he's to see everybody in the constituency, he will not even be able to attend plenary. I've been looking for Alajio Ogbara. She has to be at the office. This is not a place for you to come out and just speak at them. We're here to speak to issues. And as a station which is responsible and cares about the development of the nation, we would like to say that any word or the words that are said here today are not backed by the station and they do not represent the opinion of the station. What we are here to do is to present the platform. So we're issuing that disclaimer before we get started. And having issued that disclaimer, once again remind us that what we are doing here, let's make it as civil as possible. No harsh words, no insults to be tolerated, just communicate and let elicit as much result as we can get. So once again, welcome to Lagos Talks Town Hall Meetings Abu Yike to Edition. Let's put hands together for ourselves for that. So, Mr. Lorremicon, we will throw this quick question to you. We have some of people that had to leave, go to work to show you how particular people are. We've had table servants who had to leave and another person who have given us the questions they wanted to ask. They will go online to watch it. And I haven't said that if you're here watching right here in the hall, we're transmitting live on Lagos Talks ninety-one point three FM. You could call your family and friends to tune in and hear the conversation that will be transforming Nigeria, one local government at a time. That is more important. And secondly, if you're here and you have family outside there or you're listening to us on Lagos Talks ninety-one point three FM, know that you can follow us on our social media platforms, on Facebook and on YouTube. We're broadcasting live. Just look for us Lagos Talks nine one three and you can join the conversation. Mr. Lorremicon, let's get started with you. How do we correct or where do we even start the, the management from? Looking at all the challenges that you've listed, which the local government or LCD is confronted with?
Thank you very much. I think we just, we just need to face the reality that every generation, we have issues of significance they have to resolve. Uh, many years ago, the major issue facing mankind was slavery. And many people thought slavery could not come to an end because some persons were benefiting from slavery. Uh, with consistency, it came to an end. In Nigeria, some twenty-five, thirty years ago, we had military rule. I have the opportunity of meeting late Dr. Nambe Azikwe when military rule was going on. Like I mentioned, I was a foundation member of the Committee for Defense of Human Rights. We met him and we were talking about the state of the nation, what is to be done. This same question, the moderator is asking me, Dr. Nambe Azikwe asked us. And we then said, the solution is for us to be on the street. All men, all women should be on the street to challenge the government of the day. He then said, how? Only a madman can argue with somebody with a gun. Whether we are mad or otherwise, I don't know. But I know Chief Garnifaweemi, Dr. Beko Razonputi, Ulisa Bakoba, Clementine Wankor and many others, they were on the streets. If you have forgotten, we had the campaign against democracy. They will tell you when to sit at home and we are sitting at home. The military waits. In summary, let us be consistent with what we are doing. I was happy when I was here. The, the memory that was occurring to me was Punch Newspaper that sponsored a thing like this.
We already have some questions here for you. But I would also like to encourage those who are watching on Facebook and on YouTube, do send your questions that you have. Because we know that the members here and the honorables here, they are not leading a jobless people. So some of you at work, some who are able to come here, so if you are at work and you're watching, do send in your questions. It will be communicated accordingly. So back to you, Honorable Fermi Sahid. What are the challenges you feel probably in your capacity as the House of Assembly member? What are some of the challenges that you are confronted with or you feel confronts leadership and how can we resolve it?
Thank you, Kyadi. If you, I've just been, I've been lectured for almost nineteen months now. I've been representing my people for nineteen months. But the thing is that attitudinal changes. We need more engagement like this to really enlighten our people on the role of a lawmaker. I'm a lawmaker. I'm not the one who is going there to do the road. I'm not the one who is going to provide the hospitals. I'm not the one who is going to provide benches and decks for schools. But my constituency has voluntarily sent me, voted for me to go and advocate, to go and bring in how to get a better healthcare facility. When there is time for lobbying, because that is within my, the jurisdiction of my capacity, use my lobbying capacity as a lawmaker representing the good people to say this and this project are the project that people are yearning for. And also in times of just placement, engagement, awareness and education, I need to come back home and educate my people for you to move from point A to point B to point C. These and these are what we are supposed to do. I'm not, I don't have executive votes to be tying roads, to be throwing money. I receive salary and this salary is only meant to keep. I receive salary, and this salary is only meant to keep me living. So that when they see me as their honorable, they will know, "This is our honorable." And for me to be able to sit down, think, articulate on how to formulate good, eh, good bills that will make my society a better society. I think that is the only misconception that we have in Africa, that we have in Nigeria as politicians. People misconstrue the position of a lawmaker to that of an executive.
Alright, thank you so much for that. Now, I'd like to bring two things to our notice. First of all, uh, the conversation is going on here and there's a parallel conversation elsewhere. Uh, how can we get the best of what we are doing here today? If we are not commu, uh, focusing or concentrating on what we are doing? So we'd like to encourage everybody, let's reduce our voice so that the conversation here, every single soul in this studio can hear us. That's the first thing. Secondly, when it comes to politics, and maybe, um, Alaja Kafila Obara can help us on this. When it comes to politics, we hear a lot of talk about youth participation. But looking at the hall right here today, I'm just thinking at the top of my head, how much of the people here, or what is the percentage of youth in this hall today? What is the percentage of youth in this hall today? If we were to do a random check now and say, anybody between the ages of, okay, let's say the, the standard which is thirty-five downwards, rise up, how many of us will rise up? But how can we get the youth to benefit from the, the dividends of politics, of democracy, tap into the opportunities in government? Because to an average youth, there is no opportunity at all. Governments are just there to take salary, and that's why they are there and us. Is there any opportunity for the youth that they can tap in and how? Alright?
I hope, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kayori. Like I said earlier, it's very important for the young people to know that their time is now. There, there's no any in future. Eh, tobadi bakon, kosi bakokon, iseni. So once you are, you are determined and you make up your mind, explore. Eshe ojukoko, to be well informed. You have to go out to get all the necessary information that you can need. And you have to be committed, you have to be hardworking. Nothing comes à la carte. Governments cannot do everything for us, and they cannot even do anything for you. Look at it like that and see how you can tap into the system and see how you can help yourself. The government is trying in different places, in different states, and of course at the federal level as well. Even though we believe that Nigeria should be better than what it is today. But as young people, this is our time and we have to explore. We see what happens all over the world. You can think inward and see how you can contribute to your immediate society. I started as a young person in my university days in Unileag. And I was, throughout my university days, when I was in my departmental level, I was the departmental treasurer. When I was at the faculty level, I was the faculty treasurer. University of Lagos also, I was the also treasurer. So you have to be determined to be a leader at every level. All of us cannot lead, but there are different ways you can lead in your immediate environment. No matter what it is you are doing, whether you are a farmer, whether you are, you are trading, you are a organizer, whatever it is you are doing, just put in your best, do it very well. There will be people that will see what you are doing, people see what people do. You think people are not seeing, there's nothing you are doing that people don't see. Even in our various establishments, in the local government, as members of staff or appointees, your local government chairman knows who is doing what. So what we are saying is that wherever you find yourself, upscale yourself, develop yourself, try to learn more. And there are so many things we can do all our own. When I was discussing the other time about opportunity of accessing funds, even Lagos State Government has Lagos State Trust Fund. This is our honorable commissioner here, she's in charge of wealth creation. Ask questions, walk up to your leaders. If you cannot access them, there are different mediums that you can access them. Social media has made things to be very easy now, like I said, technology. Even if you go on your WhatsApp, just do a video, bah, say what you want to say, it will get to that person, trust me. But say what is positive, what you think will be beneficial, a contribution, an advice, or a need that you think should be treated. There are a lot of things on social media now that, as government officials, before I came into government, I said, "Even if I can get a role of identifying only port holes for governments, let them just give me an appointment." Because I had that headache, that what is the problem? You get to some places and then you wonder if there's even government presence there at all. Where is the local government? So these are things that even moved me as an individual to participate in politics, even though I started politics from my university days. But as young people, you have to be provoked. I expect our young Nigerians to be provoked. Most of them don't have voters card. Except now that the, you know, the, the campaign and everything was very, very aggressive. And it's very aggressive because some of us in Lagos State, we believe that the presidential candidate is coming from our state and we cannot afford it. So this is why we have been very, very aggressive around that. Because if you don't have the voters card, you cannot vote. And it's not enough for people to have the voters card, you have to come out. No matter how long that queue is that day. This is one of the problems with our young people again, they are never patient enough. Tobi long queue, ah, it's too long. Or come on, because they are on their phone permanently. So you have, even the votes, you have to be vigilant and see what happens there and ensure that everything goes peacefully. Take responsibility, see this thing as your thing, as your project. Don't say you are voting for somebody, you are voting for yourself. Because whoever you put there is the person that will bring the return. For instance, I am going to the House of Rep, and I've told those who care to listen that, me, I know that Abuja is the pool, federal pool, Fubobo Nigeria. So it is the kind of representation you sent that would determine the kind of dividends of democracy you get. So Fubobo, I love there, I love just that one lady. So if you take, eh, any of Shaprapra, Tobalo, in Kotobadewa, Lemadba, eh, only they go there just to collect their salaries. But you have to, wherever you find yourself, as a House of Assembly member, as a council chairman, even as a council chairman, you can influence the governor to bring, to do a lot of roads in your local government. Better than what happens in all our local governments. It depends on the personality, it depends on the individual.
Alright, man, thank you very much. And it's obvious that we didn't just bring people that are Shaprapra, we also brought people that are Shapropro. So they are, they are all here representing, making this town hall a success. Now, you, you made a comment about, uh, being vigilant and taking responsibility. And you also made a comment about going there to jabber for the people. Now, that might sound like a slang, but I've said on my program on Saturdays, that's the conversation, nine AM every Saturday. Um, I said there some time ago that the National Assembly is to discuss issues that concern Nigeria. But the representative is to discuss issues that concerns his or her constituency. You're going there to fight for your constituency. It is when we come together that we are discussing Nigeria. So which means that if you send anybody from any constituency and you see some constituencies are getting more allocations, more, um, funds are being spent there, rather than as Nigerians, we get angry that these people are being favored. Ask your representative, how come those people are getting these things and we are not getting them? And I think what you just said now is very important, it's part of the education, that we need to inform people to know the need of the people that represent you and their responsibilities. That's very key. Now, let's come to you, Mayor. Uh, she made a comment about, um, the immediate environment, being a leader in your immediate environment. And that reminded me of when we were younger. We had the president, we had the governors, we had the local council, local governments back then. We had all these cadres of leadership. But within the community, we had people that were not paid by government, we're not paid by everybody, but we're always on the lookout for who is doing right, who is doing wrong. That seems to be missing in current day politics. Because that's also a political post, although you are not elected. How did we get here and how can we get out of it? And does that affect leadership at the local council in any way? Alright?
Hello? Alright, Kayori, thank you for that, um, question. Um, at Agueke two, as I said, when we came on board, we said we must communicate with our people. We must reach out to our people. And we have a lot of people around who, you know, criticize us, who critiques us, who tell us what we're doing that is good and that is not right. And this is what we've been doing since we came on board. And being able to ask us questions, that's actually influenced our decision-making. And this has actually, you know, shown in our delivery of, uh, dividends of democracy. Now, like I said earlier, we organize our meetings, you know, every quarterly. Our councilors go around, they meet people. And there's a lot of people who asks, who ask questions and all that. Let me quickly say, when we are, when we are there, somebody sent a message to me, said, "Why town hall meeting? Where you can fix road, where you can do this, where you can do that?" And I said, "If you are fixing road, you tell me I'm not fixing your street." If I fix your street, another person will tell me I'm not doing the. So we're organizing a town hall meeting, wherever you come here, ask us question, challenge us, discuss with us. But you're telling us, "Why are we doing town hall meeting?" And I said, "Listen, I'm challenging you, let's go out there, let me take you out and see what we're doing." And part of what we're doing, you see, we have, we are faced with a lot of challenges in terms of funding. And we actually, we said, "Okay, let's think outside the box." My predecessor, the first executive chairman of Agueke two. Agueke two as a whole then was crime-infested. Akanyemodo is one of the toughest location in Lagos State. As a woman, she took it upon herself to dislodge the place, change the narratives, convert it to a housing project. When I came on board, I took over it, look for a partner with financial institution, pure on a public-private partnership. If you go there now, you will not recognize the place. You see, this is part of what we are doing. I am telling you, in Lagos State, I don't want to say Nigeria, yeah, but I can say it as well. We are the first LCD or local government that will be doing such project. Our plan is to have over one thousand two hundred units of flats, duplex or detached. But now, we're currently at two thirty-eight. And we'll be commissioning it by this year. And I can categorically say to you that that will fresh, will bring a return to the local government. So far, we've generated over two hundred million from that project. And I can tell you, that money has been invested back in the community, in projects, in empowerment programs, in our health sector, in our educational sector. And why we're doing this is because we're getting a good feedback, we're getting feedback from people. I am ready, criticize me, I'll tell you, I'll defend myself.
Okay.
This is why we're doing it, and this is why we are, we cannot achieve what you're saying for now. But our plan is to make sure that we satisfy our people, they are very, very important to us. And we'll make sure that we do that.
Alright, great. And I like the way you said, "Criticize me, I'm very, very open." When you said that, my ear caught somebody say, "Gegen." So ready for all the criticism and questions.
Trust me.
Alright, but, okay, now moving on, uh, we'll get to the next, uh, stage of the panel discussion now, where we open it up to people to ask questions. But I am looking beyond what you're doing, the housing, uh, probably you address that later though. Uh, it's good to know who has access to it. How has it been, uh, how much is it going for? Is it affordable? What is the process of getting into it? Because it's one thing to put up a project, it's another thing for people to be able to access it or even know how to access it. So you talk about later on, probably during the course of the, of the presentation. However, let's come to you, Mr. uh, Shu, Lorimikon. Now, you spoke about what you did in the eighties during military rule, where you be, you could be killed and nobody in the world can stop it. The most they will get is a sanction. But we realize that nowadays, in a democracy where you do things and so many other things could happen, people even have some rights to an extent. You have, you hear people say, "Ah, you can't do this now because government will not allow it." Is it that the democratic government is now worse than military government? Or we have less active citizens leaders who are able to confront the democratic government? Because there have been accusations of people like you, not you particularly, but people in the CSO who have said, "Ah, I want to be better there, ah, they've been done." But what really is going on?
Thank you once again. Um, I think life is dynamic. The way Mayor explained the dilemma he faces, that even if there is money, if all the jack of his local government is devoted to road rehabilitation, people will still say, "Shu, eh, tule she dubai lo." Uh, one of my colleagues is here. I can't remember when last I have gone to Makoko. But he brought an issue of extrajudicial killings. We did not start by asking, "Eh, lulamari." We did not ask by saying, "Shangwa family yoliwa fuhankon." We went into it that an injustice on one is an injustice on all. We confronted the state government. In fact, we were abusive. When we got to governor's office that day, the governor was nowhere to be found, to be found. We then sang for him. "Mr. Governor, I require a log money, I get binti log bori." He's not my enemy, the governor dead, the governor of Lagos State dead was not my enemy. He's somebody my friends and friends know very well. But we are talking of governors, somebody was killed. We have to take it up, and we took it up. Part of what we are doing, even if I don't do it, the whole world satellite is on horse. We have one court they call Eko Asco. If they say Eko Asco, you would think it's far away, it's in Abuja. The Shata Nigeria signed during Shadari regime, African Shata. Some people review it and superpose it with what is happening. If the gap is too wide, they will call Nigerian government to order that you are not doing the things you are supposed to do as a nation and as a member of Eko As African Union. We also have one, they call Transparency International. Even if I don't do it, they are taking records. And every year, they keep on saying corruption is getting worse in Nigeria. Whether it is true or false, we all know it. If you go to General Hospital, they will tell you, "Ah, Babo Mo, congratulations." "Ema so woke to Romoi," that is corruption. So if you like, speak about it. Even MK Wabiola was saying, if they are going to privatize NITEL, they will be more cautious so that they don't compromise national defense and safety. But we have sold NITEL, every one of us here is asked for, either you are subscribing to MTN, ETL, don't let them mention it. However, the reality of it is this, after we have sold our telecommunications, we have compromised our national safety. That's why Boko Haram is having egg way. If you report Boko Haram to the security, as you are reporting, they know. Whatever the security is planning, they know. Because at the end of the day, the email of the IG is on one of the subscribers of the people we sold our telecommunications system to. So the way the IG email is going to the area commander, Boko Haram is also receiving. Even if you go to the bank and you would draw money, you want to go and pay ransom, the Boko Haram people know, because the email of the bank is dropping at their head.
But, but what we, what you are saying now, the question I will ask as a media practitioners, we are not the only country that has privatized its radio, its, uh,
Yes.
National carrier.
Yes.
The, uh, as a national carrier, the telecom.
Yes.
But how are they able to manage it? So it means there's something going on. But before you answer that, what I really wanted you to look at is, what is going on now that we are less able to demand what we want from government as compared to the eighties, when during military rule, we were able to confront government and still get some results? What is happening now?
No, what I'm saying is this, in your own opinion.
Yes.
We have gone on leave, in your own opinion, and I'm saying that is not correct.
Okay.
Civil society has not gone on this.
No, no, but okay, no, what? No, let me, let me put the question this way. That is not what I'm saying. That is what people say that now the government is not able, you are not able to speak to government. So you are saying that is not the reality?
That is not reality. Just three or four days ago, one of my colleagues just came back to Lagos. On Friday, police besieged his house somewhere at Alakbere here. On Saturday, they took him away. For the first time in recent time, they gave him air tickets. They dragged him into the aircraft and took him by air to Abuja. When he got to Abuja with noise, that jobless, uh, one of my friend, I call him jobless, is a senior advocate of Nigeria. He was the one who went to the police. I said, what is this again? They said, hold on, hold on, hold on. Finally, they granted him police bill on Saturday, unprecedented. On Monday, the petitioner was nowhere to be found. He wants to come back to police, police said doesn't concern him. He was stranded. Many of us in this sort. And I'm also saying that unfortunately, unfortunately, our public officers are not patriotic. Very unfortunate. One law Dubai, one rebashen she, one law, oh more, uh, itro airport, one more bashen she, one more Kennedy airport, one more bashen she, but tabaddebi substandard. Ah, they're the poor, only mayor so he. Eko yinon, let it be bugogno. Tabadawo ni bitore me wa, one timo le ni. Eko yinon, let it, um, but it's more ball, ah, but it will buy, be out. One now, one is bedroom, one certain, can only wear bed, can you show her? But Eko yinon, let it be. So, eh, eh, Koi de konon, let it be, you know, off one, you're off eh. Ni, you know, civil society, and ni WhatsApp. Tafima monitor, all of that, to back by bribe. Me, oh, three, or second, to my code, that I need to go against the police. Amabu, amasorosimo, I don't want to go. But in Taferry, oh, Laferi.
All right. Okay, and I think that answers a lot. Let's put our hands together for the panelists. All right, I'd like us to do one thing. Some of us came here around 6:00 AM today, some earlier. While he was leaving home, some of us were already here. So when we were saying he left home at 6:00 AM, like we were already here at 6:00 AM. But some of us also came later on around 8:00, some 9:00. But it's past 12:00 right now. And a lot of us have been sitting since we came in. So I'd like us all to stand up for a minute. Excuse the panelists, they've been standing. Okay, you want to join us, stand up? Yeah. Um, okay, okay. Since some of our elders are already doing that, let's sing a nursery rhyme. Let's sing a nursery rhyme, just something like, my head, my shoulder, my knees, my toes. My head, my shoulder, my knees, my toes. My head. So look at the person to your left and just say hi, share your name, interact. And look to your right, have a conversation. All right? Okay. Great, great. I just had to make you talk a bit because I've been talking for the past two hours. So I won't be the only one talking. Let's have a seat, please. All right, so it's time for us to go to the next part of the panel discussion. And this time around, we want to ask questions. Now, all four of them have done presentations. Can we have one house, please? Let's come together. Let's come together, please. We need to finish this soon. Uh, food is ready. The food was being served, but we had to stop it. Hello, can we have one house, everybody, please? Let's have some silence in the hall. Thank you. The food is ready, we just had to stop that so that we all can concentrate on what is happening here. So when we're done, we all will go for lunch afterwards. So we'll open up, we'll pass, there'll be a microphone going around. If you have any question, you can raise your hand. You get a number and when is your turn, you speak. But before we come to the floor, some people that had to leave have this question for, for the mayor. And I think he foresaw the question, okay. Somebody else asked you something similar, which you've answered in part. Says question number one. Honorable Oshino, why has the Agueke two LCD refuse to construct drainage at Otumba Aragbesala Street? So that the flood can be channeled into the canal, which is less than 900 meters from it? That's one. Question number two. Honorable Oshino, what has the LCD done to harness the blue economy that the aquatic resources for poverty alleviation, encourage exports and key into federal government's one state, one product infrastructure or initiative? Question number three. Can honorable Oshino explain why the proceed Alakbere Ultra Modern Market Construction? Okay, maybe the proposed Alakbere Ultra Modern Market Construction stalled for seven years.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay, I do.
Can we have some quiet, please? Let's listen.
I appreciate what the, uh, the question that was asked. Uh, let me start from the market. The AKME, the Fortune Garden AKME market. Uh, we're about to start when we have issues with the Nigerian police force. Um, we have the boundary issues. Before, they thought they were the owner of the land. The state government actually gave us the land out of Fortune Gardens. And we've been on it since then. But luckily for us, we're able to push it to almost to the end now. If you look at it, there's a, there's a board there, there's a project board and everything. And this was stalled by the police. They were actually, they actually put up a caveat at that center and they put up a police van. And you know, it's very difficult for me to start going there and start fighting the police. So the best thing is for me to go through the normal process, uh, through the state governor, uh, through the commissioner of police, to the IG. And now, they will establish the boundaries now. We've established the beacon for our own side of it. So they want us, they said, they promised us as of two weeks ago that they will write to us. And you know the bureaucratic process. It has to come from the IG to the commissioner of police. They must get a signal and all those things. So that's what we are, that's the challenge we are facing there. And we've, you know, uh, addressed the market, uh, the traders, we've told them about it, they know. But you have to wait for them. It's not about courts, going to court or not. It's all about us settling what is on ground. So that's on that. Then, um, the drainages. Yes.
Aragbesala Street.
As I said, if I have the money, I will do all the, all roads in Agueke two. If I have the money, I have, I'll do all the drainages. I don't blame him because he's living there. So he wants his drainage to be constructed. I have done some, not every. I have to prioritize which one is more important. Ascend, which one is economically viable and all that. So for me, for us to avoid flooding in my community, about, uh, that was, I started in June. The project that does, that is not under my jurisdiction, I dabble into it. Which is clearing of all the canals throughout my LCD. We spent over 100 million there doing this. And I can tell you, since I came on board, this is the first season, rainy season, that Agueke two, it have been reduced by 80% in Agueke two. Go out there, I receive over 50, 50 letters.
That's flooding, you mean?
Flooding, I mean. So we've tried to reduce it. Constructing drainages is not, if I have 60 million, 70 million, I'm able to do more than three or four. You understand, doing the proper one. But we have to look for the alternative way. Which is for me to force things is to clear all the canals. Because I know I'm able to construct all the drainages in Agueke two. So when I clear the canals and there's a free flow of water into the Ague Creek and all that. So it will reduce flooding our community. And the people can testify to that. I have over 50 letters from CD, from CDA, Landlord Association, appreciating us in Agueke for what we have done. Even the Lagos state government actually sent a letter to us to appreciate us. They send their team to Agueke two.
All right. And the third one, taking advantage of the.
The aquatic, yes.
Yeah, the aquatic, yeah.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're surrounded by water. And most of, most of the water around us are salty water. So it's very difficult for the, for us to, you know, start doing fishing or investing in. Even we try snare products, our land is salty. So they can't last on it. So the best thing we are, what we have done is to send, write a letter to the Minister of Agri to give us, you know, farming land in Epe, towards Ogun State and Igbo. And we're working on it so that we can help them. So what we have done so far, for the last one year, we have actually supported the farmers, giving them tools. But most of them will go out there, you know, farm somewhere else and bring it down there. We've been supporting them, they are the association. And if one of them is here, we'll be, they will be able to testify to it. Support the poultry, uh, the poultry business owners, we give them feed, uh, a, a, uh, a delia, you know, we give them beds. So this is what we have done so far in terms of.
Right, so in terms of the blue economy, for clarity, the current state of the water, I mean, does not, um, makes it virtually impossible to do much with a blue economy?
Yeah.
All right, and, um.
We have a caveat here from, uh, Aguey, they can testify to this.
All right.
They are not, they're not a major business here.
All right. So Joakim Chooks, if you're listening, probably you have an advice on what we could do with salty water.
Yeah.
Feel free to put it across. If you can reach the mayor, come to Lagos talks.
Seriously, if you have any advice on way forward for us, please come to Agueke two, send a private, DM me on my social media and either Facebook, Twitter or Instagram. Um, 24 hours available on it.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll open up the floor. Um, do we have questions from any of the? Okay, we have one hand there. We have, okay, one, two.
One up there.
Okay, you want to speak, ma'am? All right, ma'am. So one, two, then we'll come to honorable. Yeah, upstairs, okay. We'll take it in bits, we'll take it in stages. So, um, can we have the mic passed to? No, not, not him. The first person was the, is the elderly man in a cap. Then you come to the man in green. Yes. Your name, please, where you're coming from and your question, very brave.
My name, my name is Olaiwala Hassan.
Okay.
From Bangwo, CDA, Agueke two LCD. Now, my first question, straight to the honorable member, House of Assembly. Uh, Femi Said, honorable Femi Said. What do you do with the constituency fund? Because you claim not to be in charge of the construction of roads. And I just want you to tell us what you have been doing with the constituency fund you received. That is that.
All right, if, if we can do this, before you go on, sir. If we can do this, let the questions go and let's avoid clap so we can save time. If you want to clap, we can give you 10 minutes to clap. It will even help the panelists from answering questions. But if you really want feedback, let's reduce the clap. Later on, we can give a resounding clap. Your second and third question as well.
Mister, um.
Lore Mekon.
Please, I want you to enlighten us. Tell us straight the solution. Because you lay claims to when you talked to, um, Namby Azikwe.
Azikwe, yes.
Um, others. Do you still expect us the way politics is played those days? In 1963, you still expect us to play the same, the politics the same way in 2023? You want us to still file out and begin to protest everything we file out in the name of protest that we want government to do this since we now have a civilized democracy?
Okay, sir.
Now, do you want us to still go? Number three.
Oh, okay. Let's keep it at three, sir. This is the last question, yes.
Uh, mayor, please, what will you be, how will you be addressing our issue at Bangwo community concerning Adenola, Akitola, uh, Azakitohe and Obushendi is now begging, not even calling, is now begging for rehabilitation? Please, do something for us.
Thank you very much. And please, let's take note, uh, because it was the first person to ask a question. That's why we allow that. But the questions will be one per person, there are a lot of people. So please come to, mama in front, yeah, it will come to you, sir. It will come, she will come to you. Come to, uh, the honorable, yeah, then you go to, uh, no, you'll go to the man, gentleman at the edge, then it will come to you.
Thank you very much.
All right, ma'am.
The name, is it Shoray Mekon?
Lore Mekon.
Lore Mekon.
Yeah, Shino, Lore Mekon.
Oh, you're almost.
Not, he didn't say Emilokom, I said Lore Mekon.
No, it's almost aligning.
Okay, all right.
No, it sounds the same, isn't it? Eh, Yorubalokon. I have this serious concern as a politician. And I think it's the civil society that should have echoed it, especially in a political dispensation. Why are we still being governed with a constitution that was made by the military, 1979? And with a lot, a lot of inadequacies. Definitely, we all know that in a military dispensation, the power is like a unitary government with power residing, uh, residing up at the federal level. And that is why we are talking about our resources of Nigerian is still being distributed. 52% to the federal, all these are not democratic. And a lot of issues that should have been on the concurrent list is still in the exclusive list. These things are dragging us back. The civil society should play prominent role in advocating seriously for a change. The constitution of a nation determines what happens in that nation. And we have a wrong one right now.
All right.
And the civil society is not talking about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Get the third, no, um, okay.
Sorry, I'm using my clouds. Um, this question is actually for Alaja Ogura. Um, does your party have a zone, a percentage of positions to, to women? Um, you know, I mean, for inclusivity, I know it's done in the office. We have it in offices and in a lot of places. But do they have it in politics? Thank you.
All right, sir, they couldn't hear you, sir. Can you say that again?
Do they zone a certain number of, um, positions to females for inclusivity? So that women are represented in the, I just wanted to ask, I don't know, I'm not a politician. Thank you.
All right, ma'am, let's take the gentleman there. Then we end it for this session, they all answer and we come back. Yeah, the one standing. Yes, uh huh.
Yeah, good afternoon, the moderator.
Yes, sir.
Um, my names are Evangelist Akitola. My question goes to Honorable Said. You see, they talk about what the community needs.
One question, sir. One question.
Well, it's, it's just on the same line question.
All right, so one, yeah.
So, you know, how can a politician have an influence to change? By enlightening their people on the more, on the role of a model? But himself as the honorable Said, how many times have you gone to the grassroots to meet your people, to educate them, to influence them, to know the step to take? And what way forward are we expecting for 2023? I'm speaking on behalf of this Araba CDA community.
All right, so let's come to the panelists for the questions to be answered. Uh, do you, do we start? Uh, do you, do we start with you or let's start with Honorable Lorimiko? Since you answered some questions, we'll come up, it's steps at different layers, yeah. Let's go with you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I want to say first and foremost that, um, I'm not saying we should leave this hall this afternoon and go and storm and demand for good governance. What I'm saying is that we need to understand the problems in our hands, how to address it. When the NSA's protests broke out, I was indifferent. But when the killings was really going on, I showed face. I called myself retired activists. I went back to service. Throughout the panel sitting, I was there. I don't live in Lecky, I live downtown Ikrodu. As I'm speaking, somebody who went with me is hearing me. If you see the places we were hitting, eh, we go up, ah, show little you. We denied ourselves to be in that panel and we thought the panel is rounding up in three months. Three months ended up going beyond nine months. We were taking photographs, we were recording, let me leave all that. I also want to say that for me, there is no difference between Nigeria and United Kingdom. There is no difference between Nigeria and United States of America. I can say it categorically. The number of people that are homeless in New York, oh, do take a look. Tom, bang, toy, taban, ah, Alaja, so, oh, Jack, Praprap, tabal, I've got Jack, I've got Jack. Well, I knew. And it's a bad move, to be abroad. There, bankway, there, don't, sorry, book, ah, ram, oh, beyond, oh, me, oh, your generator, she, she. I'm a big calling, oh, don't, I'm a, oh, show, le, ba, me, why, you, bye, could be, calling, more. You don't pay, Papa, oh, my, yeah. I didn't have a, yeah, pa, I've got, yeah, pa. Or, eh, the mini, Minister for International Affairs, Raufarek, or, eh, the mini. Better, Bob, international passport, eh, bang, my, eh, oh, the chef, we know, she, I read it. Oh, the chef, we know, she, I read it. Oh, that, Bawa. Eh, via, oh, the moment, oh, the, me, oh, boom, moment, oh, the, my, law. Tim, Barry, one way, can you, bad, bad, one way, last night, oh, the, me, oh. But, sure, eh, the, Tom, bam. Oh, what, Tom, eh, the, co, ah, son, ah, who, who, kilo, de, she, be, a, famine. More, eh, the, to, to, few, more, to, eh, eh, last man. He, co, who, eh, he, co, get, come, ah, be, more, to, no, law. Ten, eh, eh, near, co, eh, very painful, more, more, former governor, oh, Navy, former governor. In, cotton, eh, see, oh, 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 they are located, for, eh. Our, on, now, my, cause, who, see, eh, this, somewhere, very close to my, too. In, cotton, on, my, cause, who, see, lady, estate, be rested, eh, me, oh, oh. Ah, oh, oh, eh, me, be, rested, eh, di, ah, oh. Privilege, to, law, who, who, eh, as governor, to assign, see, oh, 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 for your own personal benefit. Jack, on, eh, oh, she, be, oh. I, that, she, oh, she, be, oh. Oh, no, bang, eh, she, be, oh. So, more, I'm, eh, the, but, kilo, de, ta, want, to, one, eh, see, no, ta, only, she, be, Jack, on, eh. Because, to, by, eh, by, she, so, le, oh, am, ah, ah, we, oh, come, ah, review, cause, she, boy, ah, she, da, da, ah, ba, she, da, da.
Alright.
Eh, then, ten, more, eh, please, let me say this.
In like two minutes, because we have a lot of questions.
Two minutes. This constitution, there is conspiracy. They have planned it long ago, like you said, ma, very correct. I don't know the business of the federal government in Abu Ikitu. But, eh, every state, low, nil, eh, 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 only Nigeria, eh, eh, only federal government, eh, me. Nigeria, only, each state, low, one, eh, king, eh, federal Ministry of Abu Ikitu, one, she, what, um, Bawa. Alaja, eh, Kajakapra, Ministry of Water Resources, what, eh, federal government, what, eh, oh, only? River, Nanga, the river, eh, eh.
Atlantic Ocean.
What, eh, Bawa?
Alright, sir.
So they force us into an association that is not paying everybody, as it is today.
A bill that will, you know, ensure that that becomes a law. Once it's not a law, you know the constraints that most political parties we have to effect that. So but in Lagos State, I know that the leadership in Lagos State from our leader Ashwaji Bala Ahmed Tinumbu, they, I appreciate that and they always ensure that women are represented at every level. Even Governor Babajidio Sawo Olu, if you look at his cabinet, he has, even I think close to over thirty-five percent of women are represented in that cabinet. That's why they call him the he for she governor, because he is very gender sensitive and he looks out for the interest of women. But unfortunately, I am not too happy to tell you that I am the only woman in the whole of twenty-four House of Representative candidates in Lagos State. So but we'll continue to clamour for more, we'll continue to, you know, uh, plead lobby, because that is what we can continue to do as women and with men that are gender sensitive like you, to continue to support us, to emphasize this, that women should be well represented. Women representation is one of the global goals that the world is trying to achieve. In fact, is the number five on the global goals that the world is trying to achieve. So because we know that when women are properly positioned, a lot of problems will be solved.
Okay.
From the home, if you have a mother that is well-employed, that is gainfully, you know, gets well economically empowered, the children will be fine. Even the man will not have to bother so much. It's only the children that will be fine, even her immediate environment. So the empowerment of women cannot be overemphasized. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for that, Honorable Mayor Oshinawo.
Yeah, thank you very much, sir, for the question. Um, I want to quickly say something to you, sir. When I came on, when I came on board, uh, I remember that I advocated Adesaki Toye and all those axes you mentioned about. And we're doing this, it's not going to stop. I can categorically say to you that I have approved those roads when we had our last school meeting. And presently, the Araba Zone, Exobi, Oluatoye, Oluakemi, about four streets are ongoing now in Araba Zone as a whole. And people are, people who lives in Araba, they can testify to that. And we are doing a lot. But as I said, funding is, is, is the major challenges that we are facing. If you look at this road, uh, Ajiboye, Adesaki Toye, uh, Ibo Street was done about a couple of months ago. Others have been, we are also impacting on other sectors as well. Now, the people of Ajegule as well are clamouring for such. And because of these, we have, you know, our partnership with this Lagos State government, we are coming up with one hundred and fourteen roads across the Lagos State. The two major roads are actually going to Ajegule. So if you are living in Ajegule, I'm telling you now, two major roads, which is your Badajah, roads will be fully reconstructed. And one other road, which I will mention to you, we are still trying to, we are waiting for the CDAs and CDCs, you know, to advise us on what we are going to do. A lot of projects are coming up in terms of bowl, uh, bowls. You've complained about water. Water is not under our jurisdiction, but we have done something magnificent in Agboi Town. We sunk a bowl of water at thirty meter, an industrial bowl. And for over thirty years, they don't have any drinkable water. We are, it's there now, we articulated it across the town. People can fresh water, easily drinkable water without treating it. You know, so we have others we are doing. Roads is one of our priority would do it. But I am telling you today that your, your, the street you mentioned has been approved, about four streets in your community, in Bawa community, has been approved. And very soon, we'll be moving there. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for that. Now, because of the duration of the response and, uh, you know, we've cut down the questions to one question per person, this is what we will do. We will take one question from the students. We have our students there, please, let's appreciate them for being a part of this. We'll take one question from them, then, uh, we will go.
Kade.
Do, yes, we'll go up. Do we have anybody behind? Okay, then we'll go to the back, we'll take one from that side, one from the other side. Then we'll take one from the end, so that's four questions for this next round of questions. For, you know, the, the, the unfortunate thing is that we cannot take questions from everybody. And if you had to focus on one area, we won't be able to move around. So let, let, let's do this, we'll come back, we will come back. All right, so let's take, let's take those ones, then, uh, we'll continue with the line, uh, with other rounds of questioning. Rhoda.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kalu Ebuchie from Comprehensive Junior High School. I want to ask that, why is it important for one, why is it important for one to involve technology in his business? Because Alaja Kafila was talking about how technology is important in one's business. But what about the traders that don't have access to technology? That total access to smartphones? How are they able to, eh, are they able to be, eh, be advertising their tech, their businesses, their products online? How about it? Thank you.
All right, that makes sense. So let's go to the back, let's take one from the corner, one from this place and one from there. Okay, one more student. Let's go ahead, please.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lewa Omobobola. I am from Comprehensive Senior High School. So I want to talk about, um, how are we going to have access to water when, um, Mr. Medavi? May okay, when he was talking about the water and all those complaints, we that we don't have access to electricity that much in our house. How are we going to get water daily for, um, our, hey?
For your house chores and other things you do at home. All right. Thank you for that question as well. Let's take one from the corner, one from the first row here and one here. Then we'll go upstairs and we'll come back downstairs. Don't worry, we'll go around, we just want everybody to feel a part of our program.
Okay, my name is Prince Ladega Abraham, I'm from Aboi Kingdom. I, I pray first before I move straight to my questions. Uh, we want to use this medium to appreciate Mayor Odele Oshinawo. Mayor Oshinawo break, uh, he does the unbreakable things when he mentioned Aboi, uh, water project. He was saying thirty years. That thing was not thirty years. That thing, if I could remember, uh, was about two hundred years ago, if we could remember. Uh, my dad is over Aboi. I know the effort and service to get that water done during the era of, uh, Kone Raja Asaki. And I know what, um, Arobia Ke also placed emphatically to get the water cooperation and pipe water, uh, from K2 to down to Aboi Island. Mayor Oshinawo, you know, uh, break the jinx and were able to have fresh water in an environment that was surrounded by saltwater. What, how, how he does that, I don't know, and I want to appreciate that. Uh, please, let me poke nose to this when somebody asks a question as regards our party being gender sensitive. You were very close to the answer. The woman beside you, uh, Honorable Yosunde Arobia Ke, that's the first woman in the history of Nigeria to become the Commissioner for Chief Tensey and Local Government in the history of Nigeria. That was happened in Lagos and in our party. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. I like the way you're going historical. You, uh, you should write a book so that we can read sometime. Um, let's go, yes, that line where you are. Let's just take two more questions there, then we go upstairs. No, from here, the gentleman in green here, the one in green, yes.
Sorry, okay, yeah. Good day, everybody.
All right, sir.
My name is Chief SS Akikwoto. I live at, uh, Owode Oniri Bakor Road. My two questions goes to Honorable Said.
Can we make it one, sir, because of time?
Uh, it connects two of them, I have to make it, I'm sorry, I will be very fast, I will be sloppy. Yeah, letter was written to Lagos State through, uh, Mr. Said. I came personally to submit the letter from Bakor Elia CDA. And you attended to me very well. In fact, I really appreciate what you did. But all things being equal, up till this present today, there is no any end to that letter. Average of three million naira is spending on our road yearly. Average of three million naira spent every year.
Okay, sir.
But right from today, I mean, up till today, there is no impact of the local government that is directed to Honorable, uh.
Mayor, Mayor Oshinawo.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Odele. Up till this present time, I came to Mayor Odele to explain to him. He told me an engineer is going to that, where I should follow that engineer. Up till this present time, none of them was done.
All right, sir.
That is to, uh, Chairman Mayor and, uh, Honorable Said. If I could remind, uh, Honorable Said, maybe you don't know me, I'm sorry.
Sir, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure he does, yeah, thank you very much. Rhoda, let's do one space here, the corner there, because from here, we are going upstairs. There, the end there, Rhoda.
Today, we are live for the second edition of the Lagos Talks Town Hall Meeting, live in Aboi Kete Local Government. The theme is bridging the gap between the governed and the government.
Town meetings are very essential. It's all about deliberation, asking questions and knowing things that, um, are not usually written out there.
This is our second one and it, it's a special one because it falls on Lagos Talks Six, but this is a special one. It's always good to have this platform where people who are being governed can listen to those who are governing them and where they can exchange ideas and reactions.
It's a nexus between the government and the people so that we can get to the desired state.
I consider the talk show as a better move towards enlightening our people and letting them know those salient things that are in politics that they really need to know.
So we are buying for them, we are funding them and they're getting money from us. So people should focus more on IKE DC.
Okay.
The civil society should be on their neck, on IKE DC neck.
All right, that's a challenge to you, Mr. Luremiko.
No, I'm telling you.
Thank you, thank you, Kaya, thank you for that. Uh, Alaja Obara, you want to address the technology question? We will come to you, sir, we are going step by step. Thank you, sir. Alaja Obara, let's, let's hear from you.
Yes, um, I want to appreciate, um, Kalu Ebuchie, the young lady from Comprehensive Junior High School. Thank you very much for that question. I'm so happy that you spoke, because this shows that we are communicating. For somebody as young as that to think of asking such a question, and it gladdens my heart that it means that you will be going home with a lot of information, which is good for the society. We have to continue to catch you people young, so that the next generation will be far, far better than what we have now. She asked a question that, um, how, how will traders who do not have smartphones, that do not have access to technology, be able to fix, to be able to improve on their business? What you don't have, you cannot give, but there's always a way. For me, me, I don't believe, there is no impossibility in my dictionary.
All right.
So for traders like that, who probably are not even educated at all, they should strive to learn. We have adult schools in Lagos State. The state government has a place for adult education. If they are really interested, this thing is about passion. If you are really interested to still learn, you can go to adult school, that is one. Secondly, if you have, if you don't have access to, um, smartphones and you don't even have access to technology, you may have children or your neighbors or people around you that can help you. For instance, if I sell pepper and I don't have access to anything and I'm an illiterate, if I am very, you know, passionate about learning and about developing my business, I can go to my neighbor or anybody that has access to such, take pictures for me, please help me to post it, put my phone number, you can supply. I know people that sell pepper online. If you know how much they are making, they will put the pepper, tomato in paint buckets, tatache in paint bucket, fresh one, beautiful red tomatoes. They don't have one single tomato in their house, it is people that supply them. So look for, this is what we call tech, uh, networking in business. You don't have to, even have anything, just have the right network.
All right, thank you.
Look for information, look for how you can access all this network. You can supply these things to people.
Thank you very much for that, ma'am.
And you definitely make your profit. So as a young girl too, if you have a grandmother that does not have access to technology, maybe she sells anything, you can eagerly and happily assist her.
All right, thank you very much. I, I had, I had to stop you because the way you were describing the pepper, I was getting hungry. Um, let's, let's not beautify pepper and tomatoes right now, this is not the time. All right, uh, uh, Mayor, in a very, in like thirty seconds, you wanted to add something to it. All right, go ahead.
Hello? All right, um, we got the access to, uh, to technology. Recently, uh, Shell and Microsoft actually came to us, one of partner with us.
All right, we can hear you.
They are establishing, uh, community app, free of charge, free of charge, hello?
Let me help you with this.
Okay. Okay. Hello? Yes, uh, regarding the access to technology, Microsoft and Shell Petroleum were in partnership, they want to create a community app in Yoba and other languages, whereby they'll be going around, taking pictures, people can communicate in Yoba, people sells. The, the, uh, the primary purpose of this is for the traders on our streets, in our markets, so that they can improve on the market. So they want to do this, but at the end of the day, what, what, what they are trying to do is that they want everybody to have access to technology in terms of, you know, community trading and all that. So this is what she, she was actually asking about. And very soon, we'll be launching it, that's why we are establishing the TechOp. And this will be fully funded by Microsoft and Shell. We are only providing the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can see that the mic of the chairman stopped working. Where you are very zilious, sir, and you want to answer a question, you might off your mic, off your mic. That's what I just did by mistake, so the technical crew will refix that for him. And upstairs, let's take about three questions from upstairs. Then we come down, take one or two more questions and we call it a day.
Ah, better.
All right, let's go ahead, Rhoda.
Mike. Hello, 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 hello. You can hear me.
All right, we can hear you, Rhoda. Um, are you having challenges there? Okay.
Hello, you can hear me, okay, thank you. My name is Pastor Stevie. Uh, I just want to appreciate everyone and also appreciate, uh, Honorable Said Femi. Thank you so much for what you are doing. He is the first politician that I met that told me that, uh, he's gonna live around our community and I'm seeing him every day. You can easily approach him in agility. I appreciate you for your humble spirit, I pray that God will continue to strengthen you.
All right, amen, let's go.
Yeah, please, I just want, I just want to ask two question, one.
No, let's do one, please, very short one.
Okay, okay, this is on religion, sorry about that. Um, I heard a guy, his name is Benga, then his father is forty-five years old. I was asking his father, what can we do to Benga that is misbehaving and all that? The father said, "Owasaiye tu, emine wasa yeti, miko seko to komi." So that was the reply the father gave. At the end of the day, I was able to help this guy talking and all that. He stopped smoking, he stopped doing all manner of evil thing. And someone come from Canada and I was able to connect him to Canada. Now, the same father that said, there is nothing, I have no business with him. Now, he's one talking to him every day, he's sending him money and every other thing. But what is my question is that, what is the politician doing for the church on what we are doing to help individual every day? That is the first question I just want to ask.
For the church, okay, so I think.
Yeah, for the church, what are they doing to help us that are helping the, the people that are around? I know how many people we feed every day, I know how many people that we assist every day.
Okay, all right, can we have one house, please? Can we have one house? Thank you very much. Hello, can we have one house?
That'll be done, yeah.
All right, if we, if we continue like this, we are bringing the program to an end. Can we have one house? Can we have silence, silence in the hall? Some silence in the hall, silence in the hall. Now, that, that question, um, I would not even pass it across to any of my panelists. And the reason for that is simple. As a religious organization, you have the capacity to raise front from within your members and the access you have. Um, you know, so rather, in, in some other areas, religious organizations also help government. So I think that's the answer to that. Let's go over to the next question. One there, one here, and we come back downstairs and we bring this to an end. All right, one house, please, can we have silence, silence in the hall? Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My, my name is Monday, I'm from, uh, New Odogu Community, in Odjomu. Uh, actually, I want to appreciate our chairman for giving us a transformer, because before, we do share light.
All right, thank you very much.
Since when he gave us transformer, now we are no more sharing light and we are actually enjoying the light.
Okay, thank you for that.
But my major issue now, my major question now is the road, because we keep on talking about the road. Um, from Odjomu down to, uh, Odjomu Amaka, down to Police Post, that is a major road. And the road is very, very bad. We cannot get access to that place.
Okay.
And also, uh, Billy Way, that's another major road also. So we are appealing to, uh, to Abu Chairman, I should please, concerning that road, help us. And also concerning, um, um, Bahu.
All right, sir.
As big as that community, there is no Bahu at all in that community.
In that area, okay, thank you very much. And while you were asking that question, I saw the chairman and the song that was going on on his head is "Abo God, Chawa Your Blessing." I need, so anyway, so, um, I think any question on roads, you will bring it together later on and just because you've spoken a lot about roads, about positivity of funds, we can be addressing each road, but just take note of all the roads that need to be done. And when we are ending up, you give us probably a timeline or possibly what you are planning, just to summarize. One more question there, then you come back downstairs, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Oluashewa Kenyey. Yeah, I just quickly want to ask the NGO man, I'm sorry, I think he goes by Mr.
Oshino. No, Oshino, Lorimiko.
Okay, Ola Shino, Lorimiko. All right, please, I just want to ask you a quick one, sir. Please, what are the measures you are putting in place in challenging the government in terms of law implementation and many other things as an NGO initiative?
All right.
One, and again, as a youth sitting in this place today, what would you advise the youth sitting here today to do in participating in government?
All right, thank you for that, very punctual questions. Uh, let's go ahead and answer that. I think I have two questions here, but I'll just add one more. All right, very briefly.
My name is Comrade Adekunle Ibrahim. Obay Youth General Secretary. Whatever I say today is under Obay Youth Associations of Nigeria, registered with Corporate Affairs Commissions of Nigeria.
All right, sir.
Now, my question, Lord, your problem, the word total ban on Okada. We use them during politics, so problem of unemployment, you know, konisi isha oma wame. Now, my question now goes direct to our honorable fami Said. So please explain better to us, if it's major road, we will know, because I'm where you are, nibiti mombé, atino jigi, not in wa, not in jadi. Eh, you mean wa, only our chairman not organize a ye, anybody need chance at the ban was sorrow. Emma lo ma kwe, I'm wo lowo, turn him on, you got time, I'm on me.
All right, all right, sir, what is the question? Can you bear the head?
Question now is, the word total ban, you should please explain it to us. He is our representative in Lagos State.
All right, Esho, so we'll come to that, let's, uh, Honorable, since the last question came to you, it's better we start from you. Honorable Femi Said, Mike.
Thank you, Comrade Adekunle, under the Obay Leadership of Youth Secretary. Uh, you see, we have been faced with, Obay Youth, we have been faced with problem of insurgency. We have been faced with people coming with no identity into our community. If it is problem of employment and unemployment, the Lagos State Government is going to make sure that there is, that there will be solutions that will be meted out to people that were, that are displaced. But please, as your honorable member representing your constituency, we are still talking, we are still talking. And Obay for us and then complain, that is what I can say.
All right, thank you for that, sir. Um, Commish, uh, Mayor, was there a question for you? It's on roads, right?
Yeah, we'll do that later.
Uh, Mr. Lorimiko.
Let me, let me just add to the ban of Okada issue as well. From my own investigation, because when I heard that the thing was going to be banned, some of us that are going to contest elections were like, ah, wrong timing, Afedibo, I want you all, I want Lockada, what would they now do and all that? We sympathize with you, honestly, and we feel your pain, we feel exactly how you feel. But you have to know that the government has our interest at heart. It is the interest of us, because there is intelligence reports and they acted based on intelligence reports, that there was something that was going to happen in Lagos State if care was not taken. And the only means of movement and their communication is the Okada that they usually use. And this is why it had to be banned. But like Honorable Member said, talk is still ongoing and they are working on it. Thank you. And a lot of them are, because of that action that was taken. Because if something terrible happens, it's not what we are saying now that we'll be saying. So we have to commend the Lagos State Government for being very proactive. I think they have got a lot of commendation for that action.
Okay, great, uh, Mr. Lorimiko.
Thank you once again. Um, the issue of human rights, it's a fundamental one. It's close to what we often hear, that, um, security is the business of everybody. Every living soul must promote, respect and sustain human right. Every living soul, whether you are employed, unemployed, whether you are a Christian, whether you are a Muslim. But unfortunately, many of us take it that human rights should be the business of Mr. Femi Falani, the wife of, um, Akar, Ala Obashon. So that is what drags someone like me. I went to the university, I was practicing journalism and saw the gap to become a full-time human rights activist. I am not regretting, but we all need to work together. I can't, there is no garniffe with me that will know what is happening in the backyard of your house. If there is a right violation in your compound, you are the one to reach out.
Okay.
The primary organization I belong to, Committee for Defense of Human Rights, has a corporate office at forty-three Adeni Jones. And we have offices nationwide. We also work with other NGOs. If we keep quiet, those standing over our shoulder, they will never leave.
All right, thank you for that.
And let me round up by saying this. Yobani, tiobanbe, toobabamwabe, e kulie enomabesi.
Okay.
There is no solution than to be involved politically. If election come, go and vote.
All right.
If you don't like the face, vote against the person. There is no crime, sorry, organizer. We all cherish Japan, we all cherish Italy. In Japan and Italy that I know, they change governments, the way women change underwear. Don't let somebody pretend that until. Don't let somebody pretend that until all is done, you can't change a government. It's, it's a good thing to change government. We have the power, our citizens, to hire and fire the government of the day.
Alright, thank you so much, sir. We have the right to hire and fire the government of the day. Let's go to the next row of questions. Yeah. Um, so we take three questions and we end it. The truth of the matter is that we cannot take all the answer or receive question from everybody whose hand is raised up. So we have, we're taking one from here, we're taking one from here. There's a man that raised his hand first there whom we ignored, we'll do that and we'll bring it to an end. Alright, let's go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Olubenga Nola. Um, I really want to appreciate our leaders, our representatives, uh, for giving what they are supposed to give. Uh, but basically, in governance, we have to understand that, uh, one of the responsibility that is jame is the issue of security, of lives and properties. Uh, we are in local government level, we are seems to be leaving it in the hands of the state and the federal government. Uh, because, uh, the idea of community policing, we're supposed to enshrine in our locality. Because everything we need to do, whether in the state or federal government, start from locality, our CDA and the rest.
Alright.
We are actually not seeing it here. Somebody raised the issue of, I'm not asking question, I'm just to give an insight of what is happening.
So you have like fifteen seconds.
Alright, so the idea of crime being perpetrated in our locality, there is nothing stop the local government from organizing a kind of a community policing, whereby we have intelligent network of crime before they are perpetrated.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much for that. We appreciate it. Alright, let's take one from the angle there, just one from this area. There, there an elderly man there that, yes, the one behind there whose hands are raised. The one behind there, okay. One there, and we can't take everybody.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Ibinoba. I stayed in Owodelede, that is Owodelede, uh, CDA. We have been suffering over the decades. We, what, what I want the chairman to do, we are still beg, we are still begging, give us transformer. The, the, the borough that started in, uh, Owodelede of, uh, early this year, there's nothing be done.
Alright, sir.
We need water, we need a transformer and we need road, the three roads.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Alright, let's go, let's move on. Alright, we're making it snappy now. We're taking just two more questions and that's it. Because if we are to respond or allow every question be asked, definitely, anybody. Go ahead, please.
Good morning. My name is Shesha Adebe, known as pastor. Uh, my question is directed, my question is directed to the chairman. And then, um, I noticed he's been doing some roads around Ezobi, Adebiton. And there's one particular road that is a gateway to those area, which is Balogun Lawe. And I don't know why the road is being neglected for a period of time, number one. Number two, we brought Rotary Club to Alakwere from Bagada, please now. We brought Rotary Club from, uh, Bagada to Alakwere. Rotary Club is all about service to humanity. And we have been thinking, though like last month, we did a campaign, we did a campaign on Nigeria.
What's your question, sir?
Now we want to partner with the Agueke to local government.
Okay, great. So, um, the one who partner with you, Rotary, Rotary Club wants to partner with you. Uh, what will advise is for the chairman, I'm sure the assistants or the aides of the chairman are around. Please, let's identify the man that just spoke now, walk to him and get how, um, his contact so that we can get some of these roads fixed. Um, let's come back to the panelists and have you, uh, share some words with us, respond to the questions and, uh, give us, give us a summary on the roads. What are you going to do with roads? Then, okay, then before you continue on that, there was a question that came up that there are some areas, you see, Araromi, that cows, their cows are disturbing movement, I mean, you know, you know, littering the street, the street with the feces and all that. And that also, um, they need some of their roads fixed. So what are we, what are you able to do to those ones? Let's respond to that as we bring the program to an end.
Alright, um, thank you very much. Um, let me quickly start with, uh, the Balogun Lawe Road, uh, the guy that asks about Balogun Lawe Road and the partnership Rotary Club. We actually open with, uh, to partnership. And I haven't seen anyone, you know, uh, no one has contacted me from Rotary Club. We're there, as I said, as I said earlier on, uh, we have Shell, we have Microsoft, we have Inner City partnering with us. Inner City want to build schools, Inner City want to feed, uh, feed people, uh, the children. Inner City want to give scholarship and we had a meeting last week. So if Rotary Club want to partner with us, we are open to that, because that will actually help us. And also, the Balogun Lawe, you see, this is what we're saying. I said it earlier on, when you're fixing one road, the next street will be asking, why are you not doing my, why would you leave my own? There are a lot of access road into Adebiton, Oluwato and Ezobi. So presently, we are starting from the street beside Iyakon, straight down to Oluwato and Adebiton and Ezobi. Balogun Lawe will be the next. I can tell you, among the community or the, the CDA, the, 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 we have a lot of argument between them. Nobody want to allow their road to be left out. But we have to make decision, we are leaders, we have to make decisions. And we have, for now, we are fixing those three roads for now. Then we move to another community. Do it, probably we'll come back there. Then at Owodelede, we have not started the borough. We actually sent someone down to go and do geophysic, uh, testing to be able to locate where we can do some boroughs. So for that, we're still working on that. Roads is something that is, that is an ongoing thing that we are still going to do.
Okay.
Immediately we have the money, we're coming, full force will come. We don't need to start deceiving you. When I don't have it, when there's no money, I'll tell you there's no money.
Alright, now, there's, there's a suggestion from, uh, the PRO of the Agueke to, uh, CDA or CDC's, Mr. Ogungure. Okay. They say, why, why are we not doing palliatives if we are not able to fix the entire roads? Why don't we just go into palliatives?
Um, in Owode community, as you hold on, I'll give you a, we've done palliative several times. And it's, we are just wasting money. The road is more than palliative. I hope I can put, uh, Boda there tomorrow. It's not going to cost us anything, but I can tell you, when I say something now, the major roads will be fixed.
Okay.
We have one and forty roads that cost fifty-seven LG and LCD, that means two per local government. So that would two per local government and LCD. And these are major roads. The minimum of it is five hundred million. So that means each local government will be seen close to one billionaire to fix that road. On average, who will be, to fix that road. So they should be patient. Their community is waterlogged. I'm telling you, if you're doing any road, if you don't do it perfectly, you're wasting your money.
Alright, so what you are saying in essence is, saying it in local balance, mark on, mark on, lo ye.
So, so, eh, man, this roof for any.
Alright.
Eh, just to your law, on no, he, he won't watch it. Won't show a babami, won't show a yami, could then show me, oh, wait, do me. Eh, then that's why law, let me come back to tune you do she. So, I've, but, but it is there, there, of course, Lama, who, but, eh, they can, you pay, come back, she shake on. Eh, my appreciate you are, eh, my encourage you, I like to see me. Eh, mother, you, mother, you pay and die, you know.
Hmm, okay.
If you don't share in here, I'm, I'm a good guy, I don't know. I teach Shono, Kombia, Shono, Koba, Shono, but so not to watch it. But we are starting our budget process, our budget process. Anytime soon, in the next four months, we'll be doing our meeting, collecting information on what you want us to do in your community.
Thank you so much for that. We appreciate it.
Edjo, I'm a local here, Latin mark by our information.
Mayor.
Low you go to the machine.
Thank you so much for the comment. Honourable Okbara, let's hear from you, just to wrap up, message to the people as we bring this to an end. Hey, you can speak, you're about.
Eh, 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 ku, eh, kaso, o, gobe, yeh, 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 wa. Eh, she go, adu, pello, wa, i, ti, akbe, yeh, te, je, wa. Adedu, pello, wa, ninety-one point three FM, no. To wash, eh, agbe, kala, etoi. Eh, to, to, wo, yo, lore, goni, to, eh, jacki, asumo, ah, we, yeh, yeh, wa. Amma, ba, wani, yo, du, pe, ko, jo, ko, continue, Latin, ma, ba, wa, she, etoi. Tabati, eh, le, mashen, once in six months. To buy ya, ah, to, sumo, ah, want, ju, belo. So that, ah, ne, ma, li, ah, we, yeh, yeh, wa, ko, ko, to, ba, wo, lo, ju. Ah, be, be, re, te, ba, ni, eh, ne, bi, wa, directly. Papa, eh, ti, pe, wa, eh, ita, wa, be, by, leni, no, eh, ba, asofa, wa, to, wa. But, 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 ta, wa, meet, koma, wa. Kama, koma, bu, i, joba, le, i, eh, wa, i, joba, ko, ko, ju, i, jo, ko, you, no, lo. Ke, so, fu, wa, ni, to, ba, ko, governor. Oh, da, wa, lo, ju, pe, te, ba, soni, bi, amma, di, chef, fu, wa.
All right, ma.
Like, bar, alone, tabani, president in twenty twenty-three. Ni, to, ba, co, president, i, go, amma, di, chef, fu, wa.
All right, ma, thank you.
So, eh, she, go, adu, pello, wa, i, yo.
All right, ma.
Nigeria, ah, da, ju, ba, ilo, la, taba, alone. Eh, di, da, Nigeria, no, oh, wa, no, wa, gogo, wa. Bo, bo, wa, la, ni, ro, la, ti, play. On, ku, mi, to, jo, ko, be, sorry, the civil society. Eh, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name.
Alex, just say Emuloko.
But, Emuloko. I really appreciate you. You are doing your best in own way. This is what is expected of every citizen in any country. We have to be able to contribute our own quota. Don't say. You, 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 ki, lo, di, Nigeria. Nigeria, lo, jo, ko, i.
All right, ma.
Ki, Nigeria, kokon, be, kokon.
Thank you.
So, papa, wa, in, mo, ba, kota, bale, she, in, our, little space.
All right, thank you very much, ma. Honourable, Honourable Femi Said. All right, Honourable Femi Said. Can we have the mic?
Hello. Eh, I really want to appreciate the ninety-three point one three FM. Once again.
Yeah, Lagos stocks.
Lagos stocks, ninety-one point three, for putting up this program. It's educative, instructive and it's as a feedback mechanism that is so good. Because I, as your lawmaker, my people have understood some basic things about the processes from us and I really, you know, tend to understand their own pride, their expectations. So that is a connected network that is good for democracy to, to move forward. And I really want to employ everyone that you can see the way the council chairman, which is an APC government, myself, Alaja Kabira Okbara, Eh, Arobi Ak, and the Civil Liberty Organization, we've been tackling issues. That is to say that we endure to do more. And by the grace of God, we are getting it better and we are going to get it better.
Thank you very much, sir. Mister Loremiko.
Thank you once again. Eh, the Bible say, occupied till I come. Afé de ferre, ke, insu. Eh, ye, yomi, edje, kataji, shine your high. Nigeria, eh, bo, she, so, ti, gogo, wa, ni. Tabakni, afé, yapa, ilu, taba, lo, eh, o, le, bawa. Edje, kata, robi, kapora, wa, ye, kati, oshi. Ati, chef, ro, ni, ayi, kawa, eh, she, go.
All right, thank you very much. And in summary, what all four of them are saying can be put in two different songs. The first song, what they are saying is that stop complaining. Stop listening to music or singing songs like. Kilati mash, ayeh, yisyo, koyemi. Ayeh, toto, ayeh, toto, ayeh, male. All right, stop singing that song and change your song to things like. Nigeria, ayi, ti, gogo, wa, ni. Koma, ba, do, ba, je. Yeah, you see, yeah, eh, ah, ti, ah, le, no. Adjo, le, da, vi, le. Eh, je, kata, so, wa, po, kafi, mo, shokon. Be, 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 be. We will take that song once again, but we'd like the panelists to please rise up. And we would like to call, we would like to call on my MD, Mister Chris Bosie, to please join us for a photo session with the crew. After which the chairman says he has some words uh that he would like to share. Mashut. Ayoh, ayoh. Adu, Adu, please be on standby. It's not every time we get this opportunity. So after the photo session of the, the dignitaries, we will join them. Okay, all right. All right, sir. Where are the photographers, please? Can you join us here, photographers?
Thank you very much.
Just in the mid.
Please stay in the middle, sir, yes.
Yeah, kasu, more, ah, be.
Um sorry, can you move? I like my station to show. Let's move to this side a bit so that it's in the middle.
So I should stay here?
Yes, I like the Lagos stocks to be above your head. All right, Adu, please come up. Let's take advantage of this to um.
What of if you, now, what of your program director?
Program director, please come up.
Maybe cannot do at the end.
And I think, if you can have Kofi.
Kabesi.
Kabesi, please, sir, please join us. Kofi Michelle, where are you, please? Michelle. Thank you all for this opportunity to be here today.
Okay, ah, eh, 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 don't say Chinese.
Um can we have the chairman, he wants to say something? Please, we can have a seat, we can go back and have a seat. We shouldn't keep you standing for too long. Thank you, sir. Mayor, Mayor Shino, you wanna, you wanna say something?
Yes. All right. Um, I want to take this opportunity.
Can we all sit down, please? Let's all sit down. Uh we'll have a meal after this. We'll be sharing your food path. If you are not in your seat, please. We would like you to be roundy. Let's all have a seat. Let's sit down, everybody, please. All right. Mayor.
Yes. On behalf of. Hello. Can you please sit there, please? Please. The Esco. I want to use this opportunity to say very, you know, very thank you to uh Lagos Stock, the Megallectrics, you know, for coming up with this initiatives. And this is what we have been doing in our, our locality, in our LCD. And I am telling you, we really appreciate you. God will strengthen you. God will give you more opportunity, you know, to spread, you know, what you're doing across Lagos State and Nigeria as a whole. And I can want to say to you all, Lagos State is one of the states that allows local government to function. Lagos State's local government and LCD are functioning and are independent from the state government, no interference from the state government. And I can tell you as one of the participants here today, I wanted to take it out there to let them know that Lagos State government are not like all the states in Nigeria that interferes with the finances of the local government. So at this point, it is very important for all of us to know this. That at this local government or every other part of Lagos State, we are not being influenced by the government of the state. We are independent sometime with disagree with the state. They need to come to round table with us to, you know, to have an agreement in whatever we want to do. They don't just come into local government and do it. But thank you very much, Megallectrics, for organizing this. And I'm going to be part of whatever event you're bringing on board. Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Thank you to everyone for being a part of this record-breaking event, our town hall meeting. This is our second edition. Thank you to the MD Megallectrics Limited for making this possible. A big thank you to all the speakers from um the executive chairman Agboike to Mayor Dele Oshinow. Also, Honourable Femi Said, Mister Shino Loremiko, Alhaj Akafila, uh Okbara, as well as um Honourable Mrs. Yeetunde Arobi Ak. Thank you. And to our media partners as well, Somi Solutions, PR Company for all the support. Media partners like Cracks TV, Pulse, Spurs Brand, Olori Supergirl, Techno, Zaron, Duffield Foods. Thank you to everyone who made this a possibility. And if you want to get a food, if you want to get a food pack, please settle down.
We are here today for the second edition of the Lagos Stocks Town Hall Meeting, live in Agboike to Local Government.
This is our second one and it, it's a special one because it falls on Lagos Stocks Six, but it's.
Here politicians are no good and you left us there. Who's gonna make a change?
Nigeria needs a leader that has the vision, that has the passion, that can give us that action that we need to change this country.
We need more engagement like this to really enlighten our people.
Shine your high. Nigeria, eh, bo, she, so, ti, gogo, wa, ni. Edje, kata, robi, kapora, wa, ye, kati, oshi. Ati, chef, ro, ni, ayi, kawa. Be, 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 be.